Okay, good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Okay, we're a little imbalanced. We got a lot of people on this side and nobody... It's not a wedding, but if it were, the bride would win. No, I'm kidding. Okay, so, good morning, you all, everybody. Thank you for being here. It's always wonderful to see a room full of people. So today, our invocation will be given by our friend, Chaplain Charles Antoine from Corpus Christi Police Department. Antoine?
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to serve you in this capacity. Bless all those that must make decisions today, Father God, and touch each and every household represented here today. Father, be all that we need you to be and more. Let every decision be made through you, by you, and for you. It is in Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. And today, our pledge of allegiance to the U.S. flag and to the state flag of Texas is our very own, yes, Norma, Norma Durdan. I'm sorry, Norma, your last name escaped me. Norma Durdan. Oh, she went to high school. Where'd she go?
Carol.
Carol. There you go, Girl Tiger. She was head cheerleader and she was prom queen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Norma. Okay, Ms. Huerta, would you please call Rome?
Mayor Paulette Ojardo.
President.
Councilmembers Roland Barrera.
Here.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Billy Lerma.
Here.
John Martinez.
Ben Molina.
President.
Mike Pusley.
Greg Smith.
Here.
City Manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City Attorney Miles Risley. Mayor and Council, a quorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Huerta. We'll go to Section E, our City Managers' Comments and Update on City Operations. Mr. Zanoni.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. We have a couple of things today in the City Managers' Report. And the first is to recognize a recent appointment, Dr. Fauzia Khan as our Public Health Director. We know we had an event yesterday.
She's here.
She's here today to speak to the full council. And so after conducting a local and national search, I have appointed Dr. Khan as the Public Health Director for our city of Corpus Christi, Nuñez County Public Health District. And yesterday, we held a press conference at the Health District facility on Horn Road to celebrate her appointment. And many leaders from the community were in attendance, including Mayor Ojardo. We want to thank Councilman Barrera and Pusley as well for being there. And we had many community health leaders and leaders from Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi as well. So the appointment of Dr. Khan is a significant step towards improving our public health. We know that we've had three goals in this new business model that City Council courageously approved. That includes better health outcomes for our community, a wiser use of public health tax dollars that are used to fund public health, and then an improved work environment for our city employees, our health employees. So Dr. Khan was the, one of the last steps in rebuilding our new business model. And just a little background on her, she has 16 years of experience in government and nonprofit organizations, leading numerous programs and services related to health operations. So 16 years. Excuse me. Before joining the Public Health District, Dr. Khan served as the Immunization Services Director for Oklahoma State Department of Health. And she oversaw immunizations, vaccine response and planning, and other preventable public health emergencies for about three years. There, Dr. Khan was responsible for over 70 employees, an $86 million budget, and an $80 million vaccine budget alone. She worked with the Oklahoma State Department of Health since 2019, as I mentioned. So Dr. Khan is an accomplished public health professional. She has kind of an eclectic background, which we were real glad to see and bring her on board with that. She has a proven track record in successful disease prevention and public health programs, not only domestically but globally as well. She completed her medical training in Pakistan with a Bachelor of Medicine and a Bachelor of Surgery, two different degrees, and followed that with a Masters of Public Health at Emory University in Atlanta. And if you don't know, Emory is one of the prestigious medical universities in our country. So Dr. Khan also, in addition to her work at the Oklahoma State Department, she was with the Institute of Public Health in Ireland, where she evaluated interventions to improving aging population health. And as an American Public Health Association Fellow and Policy Advisor at the U.S. House of Representatives in Washington, DC, she contributed to women's and children's health and policies for public health programs, including Medicaid and Medicare, working with two representatives there. Dr. Khan has led prevention programs in resource-constrained settings to include Pakistan, Nigeria, and South Sudan, with expertise in program and stakeholder management and accreditation and community development. So quite a background. We're real fortunate as not only a city, as a county, but as a region to have her lead our team of professionals. We had a chance to be with them yesterday. Many of them are here with Dr. Khan this morning to have her talk to you this morning. Before Dr. Khan comes up, we did take some video footage yesterday, knowing that some of the council members wouldn't be able to make it. We want to show that now. And then we'll have Dr. Khan come up and say a few words to the City Council and the community.
New leadership is coming, and Dr. Khan begins a new chapter for our Health District.
After seven months of a pretty rigorous recruiting effort nationally, within the state of Texas and locally, we're able to find Dr. Khan.
I'm a medical doctor from Pakistan, and I've been working in public health for a long time now. I've had the opportunity to work in the Oklahoma State Department of Health as a director of Immunization Service. I've worked in Pakistan, Nigeria, South Sudan, and it's been a good journey. And now I'm excited to bring the learning and my knowledge to Corpus Christi.
We all knew that her priority is the underserved and are the most impoverished neighborhoods of Corpus Christi. And that's our responsibility through our Health District.
She's very talented, very well-versed, is a leader, knows how to run the business of public health. She is the biggest public health proponent for public health employees that I think we're going to find.
It is a very diverse and a professional team. The staff is highly qualified, and they have a passion to work for Corpus Christi residents. That is very important for a successful Health District.
These people here that are part of our team, that are our Health District, couldn't be more happy because today again starts their new chapter.
And I'm looking forward to bringing a change in the community. This is my home now.
Wow.
Isn't that a great video?
Yeah.
That's from our internal team, just in case taxpayers are watching. That's our... They do better than the private sector, so good job from our communications team. But Dr. Khan, come on up and say a few words to our council and community. We know that one of your important missions is engaging the community and working for them. So we're glad you're here this morning. Glad you're joining us to lead our team.
Thank you, City Manager. Good morning, council members, Madam Mayor, Health Department team, and audience. I'm humbled. I'm humbled. I want to thank you all for the warm welcome and the exciting opportunity to lead the Health District team. My experience and success in the past roles in nonprofit work with the public sector and community coalitions has prepared me well to step in my new role efficiently. As I mentioned yesterday, one of the reasons for me to accept this role is that the three goals of the Health District, improving health outcomes, better use of taxpayers' dollars, and building a strong workforce are very much in line with my own public health practice. Across the country, COVID has affected all walks of life. The uncertainty, the misinformation, illness, the deaths of our loved ones has taken a heavy toll on the communities. We have asked our workforce to do a lot, and they have delivered. The Corpus Christi Health District Team, Nuñez County, is a diverse group of professionals passionate to provide the best to the community. One of my major responsibilities is to build resilience and upgrade the skills and knowledge of my team through training and coaching. So we continue to deliver our routine services as well as be prepared for any emergency that comes our way. We also want to strengthen our relationships with existing partners and build new ones. That is how we can deliver better health outcomes. We want to hear from the public. We want to know what the priorities are, what the health needs us. We want to hear from all of you. This is your Health District. My team and I are here to serve, and we would like to know how we are doing, what the needs are. If you have partners in your districts that we can collaborate with us, please write text call us. We are here to serve. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Dr. Khan. Yeah, we're, again, we're real fortunate to have such an exceptional leader for our Public Health District. Are there any comments, Mayor? I do have another item.
Yeah, we're just happy, just to reiterate what you said, super happy. And it shows, Dr. Khan, in the way you speak and the words you use. So no, I think, I think I, the sentiment is shared. It shows what you're going to do. And to sum that up, it's passion. You have passion to help. You have passion to lead, and that's exactly what we need here. And that is the last piece of this puzzle. So thank you, and we welcome you.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Khan. We want to introduce somebody else to you as well this morning, Mayor and Council. And as you know, John LaRue, who was serving as the CEO and President of the United City, the United Corpus Christi Chamber of Commerce for the past three years, recently announced his retirement. And after an extensive search by the United Corpus Christi Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, they have appointed Al Ariola Jr. as the new CEO and President. This is new, new news, or it's a new day for him. He started yesterday. And last week in their board meeting, I asked him to graciously come and talk to the council. So you guys are one of the first groups he's speaking to. Before Corpus Christi, Al served as the past, served for the past eight years as President and CEO of the South Texas Business Partners in San Antonio, Texas. He was eight years there. He was instrumental in redeveloping the south side of San Antonio along with community stakeholders during his term there. He served in his hometown of Del Rio as the Executive Director of the Del Rio Chamber of Commerce from 2010 to 2014. I don't know how he could have done all that. He still looks very young, but, right? And Al is a proud graduate. This is his hometown here to some extent. He's a proud graduate of Texas A&amp;M University, right here in Corpus Christi. In 2016, he was recognized by the San Antonio Business Journal's prestigious 40 Under 40 for being a leader, a voice in redevelopment projects. Al is here with us today, and we want him to come up and say a few words as well.
Mayor Ojardo, members of the City Council, thank you for your time today. City Manager Peter Zanoni, as an ex-official board member, thank you for the invitation to present myself today. As mentioned, I've come to you via Del Rio, Texas. That was where I was born. But I found a home here in Corpus Christi back then, in two decades ago. I think you all know the education opportunities in South Texas were pretty limited, and Corpus Christi had a big vision with A&amp;M Corpus Christi. It's a vision I obviously bought into as a college student. Corpus Christi, if I could also take a point of personal privilege, is the reason I was able to, at one point in my life, achieve upward social mobility by purchasing a home. In 2001, the city of Corpus Christi had a down payment assistance program that I took advantage of. And again, there's a lot of communities across the state, across the nation that talk about equity and upward mobility. And you guys actually put things in action in this community, and I've benefited from that, and I'm forever grateful. And probably a big reason why I'm here today too, I want to pay it forward. I believe in what Corpus Christi has been doing. As mentioned, in my previous capacity at the South Texas Business Partnership, we lauded a lot of what is happening in Corpus and what the economic impact it's not only doing to the state of Texas, but the world over. And so I'm proud to be here. As mentioned, I started on Monday. I'm excited to keep getting to work, and I'm excited to get to know more of you personally. And thank you for, again, your time this morning.
Welcome. Thank you.
Al, thank you for accepting the invitation to speak today. We appreciate it. We know that this is day two on the job. Just as a reminder for the Mayor and Council, the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a meet and greet for Al tomorrow evening at the Ortiz Center. That'll be from 5:30 to 6:30. So if you don't get a chance to see him today, visit him tomorrow, 5:30 to 6:30. And it's an excellent opportunity for not only us here, but other stakeholders to welcome Al to his new role at the Chamber. We are members of the Chamber. As Al mentioned, I'm an ex-official member. We did put a request in to have another board member as well from the city, and the board is actually in the nominating process. So we hope to have two board members on that great board. We know that the Chamber is a very important entity in our community, and the city looks forward to you continuing to be a voice at the Chamber and work with them in improving our economic condition in Corpus Christi. So Mayor, I think there was one other item, but did you want to break for the citizens?
Yes, it's 12. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Yes, so we will break, and then we'll come back. You have, yeah, you've got quite a few more, right? Okay. Yes, so with that, Mr. Risley, would you please go over the rules of decorum?
Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation, and questions of council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Risley. So individuals will be called upon in the order in which they signed up electronically. In-person public comments will be taken first, followed by virtual public comment. Corpus Christi residents will take precedence over non-residents. And for those commenting in person, I would like to remind everyone that a recording is being made of the meeting. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address before beginning your comments. There are two opportunities in which you can make public comment, on the agenda, on any agenda item. The first is at this present time, and the second is at the time that the item is actually heard. So please choose one option. Citizens' comments are limited to three minutes. Non-resident comments are limited to one. And for those commenting in person, there's a timer underneath the base of the microphone, and it will let you know exactly how much time you have left to speak. Once the timer goes off, you'll hear the buzzer, at which time we would kindly appreciate that you wrap up your comments. If you have a petition or any information regarding your subject matter, if you'll, please hand it to our City Secretary prior to speaking, and she will hand it to us. So with that, we will start with our first in-person comment, William Beckett. And actually, if Carrie Meyer, Ron Graben, Jim Klein, and Sylvia Camples, if you could all come to the front row and sit here to my left. Yes, sir, go right ahead. That would be great. Sylvia, yes, and Jim Klein. Thank you. Mr. Beckett, yes, sir?
Councilmembers, Mayor, my name is William Beckett. I reside at 7518 Marionville Court here in Corpus Christi. I am here representing the Corpus Christi Astronomical Society. And as a society, we are offering the council and our city our help in planning for the 2023 October 14 solar eclipse that is taking place here in Corpus Christi. It's a major astronomical event, which has potential to draw a lot of people out. And they need to know how to safely view a solar eclipse with solar glasses and other viewing things. It's important that a person has eclipse glasses to look at the sun. And this is a major event. It's crossing right over Corpus Christi and will be here in 2023. It's in a short time to plan for. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that information. Carrie Meyer.
Carrie Meyer, 4401 Gulf Rees Boulevard, North Beach. Good afternoon, honorable City Council members, Mayor Ojardo and City Manager Zanoni. I'm here to present you with a letter of support from North Beach Community Association's Board of Directors for the North Beach Drainage Improvement Project Plan, which is item number 17 on today's City Council agenda. NBCA's board has reviewed the plan and supports it for many reasons. Many of us present here today were also here in the same council chambers in 2019 to show support for the $42 million navigable canal that council approved that day over two years ago. We have watched that 2019 drainage project not move forward, largely due to a lack of funding. The new drainage plan being presented today is not as grandiose as the navigable canal, but rather a practical compromise that includes both stormwater improvements for North Beach and new public amenities that will encourage and enhance tourism. The plan has been broken into phases, which allows the cost to be spread out over several years as opposed to all paid for at once. For those reasons and many others, NBCA's board sees this new plan as a realistic and affordable approach to solving the drainage... new plan as a realistic and affordable approach to solving the drainage, drainage issues that have plagued North Beach and prevented development for decades. Today, NBCA's Board is asking you to approve today's proposed ordinance, which will replace the 2019 navigable canal ordinance. With that said, the devil is in the details. We support this plan, but ask the city to ensure that the new changes do not negatively impact existing property owners. We know that growing pains are to be expected with any improvement, and that this project is not a cookie cutter design, but is a very challenging infrastructure improvement to encourage infill development in one of the city's oldest parts of town. But just because a project is difficult and complicated does not mean that it couldn't be done or shouldn't be done. Along with our support today, NBCA's Board asks that, as the drainage improvements are developed and move into engineering and construction phases, that the city proactively communicate with any property owner whose property will be impacted in any way by the drainage improvements. Ensuring that the community has direct input into this new drainage plan is one reason that NBCA has proposed that the city form an official committee for North Beach, made up of representatives of each of the hotel, of each of the attractions, restaurants, hotels, and the residents. In closing, our Board thanks the City Council Mayor and the City Manager for working together to create this practical, long-term solution to a drainage problem that has plagued this area. We appreciate your focus on this important and historic part of our city that has been neglected for far too long. And thank you for your service to our city.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Ron Graben.
Good afternoon, everyone. Ron Graben, 202 Surfside. There are some here that, members that are supporting this from the North Beach Association, and also, would you just stand that way you can get an idea of the support that's here today? Thank you so much for being here and for taking the time. Been a long time coming. I told someone, I said, you know, I was raised, my grandmother's chicken farm, and it takes 34 weeks for a chicken to lay an egg. Thirty-four weeks. So, think about when you go to HEB, 34 weeks. And no matter what you do to that chicken before 34 weeks, that chicken's not going to lay an egg. You can jump up and down and holler and scream and shake it and whatever. It's not going to lay the egg. So, some of you feel like the 34 weeks have come and gone, and maybe it feels that way, but it's time. And we appreciate all that you have done to make this happen. And it's a great plan. We support it. It's in phases. It's realistic, and it's going to change our city. And so, I just wanted to say thank you and appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graben. Thank you. Jim Klein.
Hello, my name is Jim Klein. I live at 3501 Montares Street here in Corpus Christi. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. I came here to express some concern about the unexpected ban on political signs on city property during this current election cycle. This decision appears arbitrary and capricious. In a city manager's style of government, the duly-elected mayor and city council represent the will of the people. Given this, perhaps the decision about a placement of political signs on city property should be made by council vote, or better still, by a vote of the people through plebiscite. I really believe that we should be promoting this election as much as possible to encourage as much involvement by as many people here in Corpus Christi as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Sylvia Camples.
It's a short little walk. I like that. Sylvia Camples, 4410 for District Two. Yay to North Beach. I gotta say that. Good, good organizing there. I am here to speak to you about voter suppression and double standards, or I would say hiding of the polls. In April of this year, the City Council decided not to allow any political signs on city-owned property. That decision had a rippling effect. It made Nueces County question whether the Secretary of State had made some changes, thus causing even more confusion regarding political signs in public spaces. They decided to change their rules, not once, but twice within 48 hours. We now have voting locations at churches that decided also to use their powers by deciding no political signs. CCISD School District decided to only allow signs in the right of ways when it contradicts with the city ordinance. Confusion. So, I am here to tell you, the people are rising up. And when Republicans and Democrats and non-voters agree that this decision is a form of voter suppression, then you, my friends, are in trouble. We are sick and tired of these double standards. We have discounted water rates for large, heavy water uses. They pay a fee instead of paying their fair share of taxes, but there is hope. Last night, Angleside ISD decided not to grant a tax break, woo-hoo, or a Chapter 13. And Bridge, there is hope. At the end of the day, all of this becomes voter suppression and double standards. It's bad enough that Texas has one of the lowest voting turnout rates. Join me by just saying, no more. No more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Camples. Okay, if the next five people can come forward, please, Armon Alex, Dr. Nancy Vetta, Gary Jaskier, and Barbara Baker. If you can please come here to the, to my left, the front row. And Armon Alex, you are up.
Thank you. My name's Armon Alex. Thank you to the council for having public comment today, and you all look nice and fancy. I wanted to really quickly touch up on what Sylvia was mentioning. You know, just as a voter, a voter alone, I think it's exceptionally important to see signage at voting locations, and it's unfortunate that we're not allowed to see signage at voting locations. You know, I think what's important here is that every single poll, in some kind of fashion, a part of democracy is to see who's running for office there. So, I'm just coming to make comment against the decision to, to limit and completely not have signage at city-owned locations. Mind you, that these are being paid by taxpayers. So, I don't want to go into there, but, you know, for reference, when black voters in the state of Texas were getting registered to vote in record-breaking numbers, and they were becoming a problem to the people that they were in opposition at in the state of Texas, the state of Texas made it harder for black people to vote. When young people in the state of Texas were getting registered to vote in record-breaking numbers, the state of Texas made it harder for young people to vote. Here in Nueces County, we've had record-breaking voter registration numbers, and it seems as though to limit and suppress the vote, situations like this specifically, where we're seeing signage being canceled and blocked at city-owned properties, is a form of voter suppression. I'm not saying you did it on purpose, but I am saying it's something to be aware of, not only as candidates, but as voters. And so, these are things that we have to kind of keep an eye on, especially now that we're seeing in our Nueces County, in our city, people are starting to pay attention to the actions of this council. It would be unfortunate that rumors or confusion might come from some of the decisions being made by council, city government. So, these are the kind of things that we need to be aware of, and making sure that democracy is being upheld here, and that we're making everything as easy as possible for people in our community to vote and be educated voters. Thank you so much for your service, Armon.
Thank you, Armon.
Did I say where I'm from? I'm sorry. My address, 1610 La Jolla.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Nancy Vetta.
Good morning, or good afternoon. I'm first going to ask that all of you please attend the Antonio Garcia Arts and Education Center on Thursday, because we have altars, or altars for Day of the Dead. And the Corpus Christi American Federation of Teachers is working with the Antonio Garcia Arts Center, is going to have an altar for Dr. Leo Carrillo. Dr. Leo Carrillo was a professor of Mexican-American Studies at Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi. And of course, they're going to have an altar there. I already saw it yesterday, of Antonio Garcia. And it's so important that we honor those folks who have preceded us and been leaders in our community, and especially, I think, with regard to culture. And speaking of which, I'm also here to find out why there was a sleight of hand in terms of the last-minute decision to, to prohibit political signs at city hall and city entities. I think it's okay if you, you make these plans ahead of time, where you kind of vet them and, and understand, and have everyone understand what's going on. But as far as I'm concerned, I've been working political, political campaigns for the last 35 years, and this is really the first time where I've seen such. And I think that what we need to do is plan better. I don't need to get 20 emails at the last minute, say, oh, you can't put your sign here, or you should put it here, or this has been prohibited, blah, 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 blah. That's too much. It's too much. So, I'm asking that the City Council please reconsider for the next election cycle, to at least give the candidates full disclosure in terms of where they can put, where we can put signs as candidates. Thank you. And please, I hope to see all of you on Thursday at the Antonio Garcia Arts and Education Center. And also, I hope that somebody will be sent over to clean the property in terms of cutting the grass and all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vetta. Gary Jaskier.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir. Barbara Baker.
Hello, Mayor, City Council Members, and City Manager, and the rest of the folks here that support you. Today, I'm here with over 700 signatures, all collected in one month on a website called change.org. It's to stop roaming dogs, which is really just the tip of the iceberg. It really is about irresponsible pet owners and animal control not being effective. I'm not here to bash animal control or dogs. I am here to bring up problems so that solutions can be made. This has been an ongoing problem in our city for many, many years. I've lived here for 22 years. It's not gotten better. Okay? It's resulted in the loss of beloved pets in their own yards, and senseless trauma to the owners seeing their pets mauled and torn up. That's not only cats, dogs, chickens, et cetera. This issue affects everyone in our city. If you don't have a dog, your neighbor might likely do, or a relative. So, it does affect everybody. We still have animal hoarding going on. We still have backyard breeders that sell what they can and release what they don't want. We still have animal cruelty. Someone is evicted, or someone passes away, the animals are just left on the street. When we have neighbors call animal control about vicious dogs, or a concern in the neighborhood about animals, they're not taken, because we've already received a call from animal control. Animal Control has already received one of those calls, so they will not take a second call regarding the same problem. The city website explains that an aggressive dog draws blood not only on humans, but other animals and livestock. Why are we not interested in roaming dogs that are killing people's pets in their own yards? Please note, a subpoena to an elderly lady who was, excuse me, please note that a subpoena to an elderly lady for not reporting a dog bite, when in fact she did call police, and because her elderly dog was mauled to death in front of her by her neighbors roaming dogs. These dogs had been reported before. Please note that threats of huge fines to neighbors who are spending their own money to trap, spay, and neuter community cats because they were feeding them. I'm not sure. Are, are we supporting the community cat caretakers? Is PACT still an option? I mean, we need to find out what's going on. Please note, Arabia's violation citation was given to a community cat caretaker because the cat was killed by roaming dogs. The dogs, again, were deemed aggressive by neighbors and had been called in before, but this lady received a citation for the cat that passed, that was killed. Animal Control decreased fines from $2,000, now it's only five, $50 to up to $500. We have more, we need more resources. Okay? The population of animals in the city is growing. This is terrible. We need more help. Animal Control is overwhelmed.
Ms. Baker, I hate to interrupt you. The buzzer went off, but I do want, my Chief of Staff is in the back, and I'd like to get your information. I don't know if you know it or not, but I'm a big advocate of animals, and, and we are working through this. Matter of fact, I have a meeting set up this week with the staff regarding this. But I'd like to get your perspective on some of these issues, please. She's in the back, so she'll.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Barbara Johnson. Let's see, Barbara Johnson, Barbara Welder, and Adam Rios. If you can all come up front, that would be wonderful. And that, that's going to conclude our, after these three constituents. Then we'll go to Webex, correct, Ms. Welder? Okay. No, we do, we have some in-person at the bottom?
We do. Those individuals are not residents, so.
Okay, so we don't have those. Okay, great. Great. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Yes, I'm a North Beach resident. Oh, hello, everybody. I'm just going to say howdy. I'm a Texan now.
There you go.
Anyway, I, I know that you've had so many plans to repair our North Beach, and that's what it is, is to repair. We need to bring in fill dirt in the low spots. The low spots exist from the beach all the way to the new road that's being put in, the new highway. And if we raise that up three to five feet, that will stop most of the water from intruding property. I know that you're talking about putting in sand dune type thing across the very front, but most of the water that we fight every day is not from over the top from the waves. Our waves are not big, except on very rare occasions. It's just seepage that keeps coming up. And of course, that's a big problem, because we have a mosquito infestation then, and that water doesn't seep back down at all. It takes it weeks. It doesn't just disappear. So, I just want to throw in that I think we really need to spend more time filling in the low dibits and not building a big box around our beach. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And Dr. Welder.
See if this is tall enough for me. Good morning. I'm Barbara Welder, 202 Reef Avenue, Corpus Christi, and I'm President of the North Beach Community Association. Before we begin, I'd like to thank all of the City Council for three years plus of hard work with, with the residents of North Beach. Most, all of you have been out at one time or another, and, and truly, it's pretty moving to see a council so interested in working so hard on this. I'd also like to thank Mr. Zanoni and his staff, who've done a wonderful job with us. So, thanks again. Now, I'm here on kind of a side note of what we're planning in terms of, of a linear parkway. I toured San Antonio and Kennedy, Texas, specifically in one day, to see some of the sites that Mr. Zanoni and others have talked about that are similar and have linear parkways. When I first heard about it, I thought, oh, no, this is going to be a terrible ditch, an eyesore. I get to San Antonio and thought it was going to be an ugly witch, but it was a Cinderella when I looked at the San Pedro Linear Cultural Parkway. Very interesting. I toured the Apache area, San Pedro, Martinez, and Salsamora, all called the West Side Linear Parkway. What I took away with, from that, that possibly we can use here, is the use of heavy recreational areas. Young people particularly want to swim and possibly have other things to do, so that would be important. And I'm not talking about expensive. I'm talking about walkways, bikeways, maybe. Also, the focus there, their vision, is to include addressing the ecosystem and improving quality of water, which is music to our ears. Such a plus, because one thing very important, as been mentioned before by Carrie, is citizens' input. Now, they had a resident and public involvement system there. I talked to a person from the San Antonio area, and she was, by the way, on one of those committees. So, they did have, the residents had in, input, and I think that's very important. Also, the artwork is outstanding. There are murals that you just can't believe. And I was just, I had to spend more time and take pictures. And they have all kinds of sculpture, sculptures. There's a shaded recreational area, which we could use, and particularly emphasis on handicap. You know, it's hard to get around that river. You know, it's hard to get around that river, but they've really done a good job on addressing that. Double-sided trails. Oh, I didn't get to Kennedy. Can I finish this one sentence?
Of course.
Kennedy Parkway, which is part of my father's hometown, is just beautiful. They've taken an ugly, horrible-looking creek called the Escondido and made a huge parkway for all kinds of activity. Close to the school, children play there. It's beautiful. Kennedy, Texas, a city with heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Welder, and we look forward to everything you're talking about. Yes, ma'am. Adam Rios.
Adam Rios, 7301 Tangled Ridge Court, here in Corpus Christi. I always bring my skateboard because you're going to hear why. I know some of you know me as that skater guy, or I see you at political events, and it's like, "That guy, he wears cool hats. He's always talking about skateboarding." I'm here to publicly thank everyone because I got the word this morning that the Cole Park Skate Park is finally going to get its ribbon-cutting ceremony and bring a lot of joy to a lot of kids that sacrificed a summer without having it to finally having it. One of the things that I was really appreciative about was that it was the first time in my memory that we had a sitting mayor invite us to City Hall and discuss not just the, you know, okay, let's build a skate park, but she was really concerned because we were coming at it from a safety standpoint. We wanted it to be a safe place, and we corrected those problems. Having gone by there, even though it's fenced off and looking at it, I was taking photos, sharing it with my friends across the country, and I didn't realize the enhancement that was going to go into the skate park, like the palm trees, and it just, it's incredible the way it all came together. So we're excited about the ribbon-cutting ceremony. It's been, it's been a while coming, but, oh my gosh, we are completely ecstatic about it, and it's just another accomplishment for this city and how we're moving forward. My out-of-state skateboard friends were shocked that we even had something by the water, and now they all get to visit. They get to see it. We get to start having competitions there. And on a personal note, they were excited because not only are they coming to town for that, but we're finally bringing back the Los Muertos this weekend and Saturday. So there's so much going on and so much, so much positive energy. And again, I just want to say thank you because you guys all had the patience to listen to me every time I came down here. I always express to the kids when we were making progress as this was coming along on how you can move forward, and, you know, sometimes kids get scared of politics. They don't want to come to City Hall, you know? They don't, they're afraid they're not going to get hurt, because for a long time, we weren't. I just think that that park and what we did as a community is a pretty shining example of what you can do if you don't just come down and point fingers and yell and raise your voice and talk about all the problems that we have. What we are enjoying seeing is that we, by working together, are finding solutions and moving forward. And I can't thank you all enough for that because when the kids talk to me, too, they're always like, "Wow, we have a, we have a city council that lets you go down there with your skateboard." I was like, "Yeah, I mean, had you not called me down, I was going to skate down," but I just want to say thank you.
You should have.
I just want to say thank you. Well, we'll save that for Thursday, and from what I understand, Mayor, you might have recently required some roller skates, so we're not asking you to drop in, but if you want to skate by one day and tip your hat, we'd appreciate it.
I have some real cute penguins.
I hope to see you all there Thursday morning. It's going to be worth it.
Thank you. Adam, and thank you for your advocacy on skateboarding, truly.
Thank you very much.
You put it in front of us in a way that hadn't been.
Well, let's do a Corpus Christi Skate Day one day.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you very much, Adam. Okay, now we'll go to our non-residents. Bernard Gottschalk? Yes, sir. And if Frank Van Horn and Roger Harris can come on down, we would appreciate that.
Mayor, real quick, that Mr. Rios had referenced the ribbon-cutting for the skate park, which is going to take place this Thursday at ten o'clock in the morning there at Cole Park.
Yes, yes, and we invite everyone here to attend, and you might take a little, maybe we should, Adam, you can bring an extra skateboard.
I've got five in my truck.
There you go. I really wish you would have ridden down there. I might, I might have you do that, just so I can take a picture.
We'll be down there.
No, I mean, right here.
Oh, yeah. When we do Skate Day.
Today.
Do I do it today?
I do, but we'll wait till after. Wait till after. Yeah, I do, though. Hi, yes, sir.
Hi, Madam Mayor, city council members, thank you. City manager, thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Yes.
I come before you in reference of RFB 4317, the Broadway wastewater treatment plant. On item eleven today, you're going to award contract, and the resolution rejecting the bid of American abatement as non-responsive is just not the facts. So I gave everyone a copy of the correspondence I had with the city up until the actual hour of the meeting that was held on the eighteenth. As you can see, and I'm not going to read through every one of them, but you have that. The city manager deemed our thing non-responsive because he said that American abatement pulled our bid, and I'm here to tell you today that that was not the case. And I don't know what happened. I don't know if that was just a mis, I know we get them in, it's really short, but I think there was some, maybe some confusion.
Right. Well, and sir, when I would refer, I would refer you to our city manager because this is operations.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you, Mr. Zanoni, you can address this.
Okay.
Yeah, so that item's on the agenda for the city council today.
Yes, sir.
We did deem your bid non-responsive, excuse me, non-responsive and non-responsible. I think you admitted that there were some errors on the bid tabulations that was submitted, and the price was well below the next lowest bidder. We just don't think you can do the work for that price point. There was an error on one of the line items in particular from a dollar a unit. I think you said you really should have been eighty dollars a unit, so our team is here, and our legal team helped to advise us on our recommendation.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zanoni.
Okay, well, I guess it is what it is. I thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming. Frank Van Horn?
Thank you, Mayor Gohardo, council member, city council, city manager. Appreciate you letting me speak today. My name is Frank Van Horn, and I represent Howard Energy Partners. We own the Havelina Plant out on I-37 here, and I'm here to talk about item number fifteen, the rezoning request that we've submitted to change it from light industrial, some of the adjacent property from light industrial to heavy industrial. The reason that we're doing this is that we've entered a partnership with Infineum. Roger Harris is here with me, and we want to bring to the, to this city the first in the state clean hydrogen facility that will take the carbon dioxide and the hydrogen that is already being produced at our Havelina Plant and converting that into ultra-low-carbon clean electrofuels that will be done by our Infineum partners there. To do that, we need to rezone our adjacent property that's currently light industrial to heavy industrial. I will be here throughout the meeting if y'all have any questions when that item comes up. I'm more than willing to answer them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Van Horn, yes, sir. Roger Harris?
Good afternoon. Dr. Roger Harris, Chief Operating Officer for Infineum, 14606 Juniper Forest Lane, Houston.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would it not, are you going to speak on the same subject?
Yes, sir.
It would probably be more appropriate to you just wait till we have the item, and then you can, you won't have, you won't be limited by a minute. You'll have more time and opportunity, and we have an opportunity to ask questions then.
Sure.
Would you rather do, yes, and that's always an option. Maybe, I mean, it may not have been explained as clearly, but yes, we can do that. We'd love for you to.
Appreciate that. That'll be fine. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll go and do that. Let's see, so we all not mark him. Okay, Ms. Warta?
So we have two individuals, one actually, I understand, on Webex, Sierra Bernard. Okay, Ms. Bernard, we can't hear you. Just one moment, and let's see if we can get you unmuted.
I see.
There you go. Okay, go right ahead.
I had two slides I wanted to share, but I'm not able to do that since I'm not an administrator, so I'll roll right into it. First, I'd like to thank you for your valuable time and your sincere consideration. You are the backbone of our beautiful city. Bear with me, this is my first time addressing the chamber. I'm Sierra Bernard. I live on North Padre Island, 16110 Brooms Edge Street in Seapines, across from Bob Hall Pier. Okay, with all the election hype, I have a nonpartisan issue I'd like to present for your consideration as a novel solution to a major point of contention. Dr. Redler addressed the need for these community investments just minutes ago. As a local Realtor for Shoreline Realty, when I sell homes, I get asked about community features and, of course, parks. Some are surprised there's no water activities besides the beach. We had Schlitterborn, and that was taken away. We simply replaced it with homes and short-term rentals. With the new large-scale development coming to the island, we need community development, too. That's where my simple proposal of a splash pad comes into play, much like, say, Salinas Park. Many islanders have long since requested a pool. That has never happened. We must drive over the bridge, park a pool, congest traffic. In the summer months, it's a nightmare. The development will only congest things more. By having a splash pad at my proposed Gypsy Park on the canal, doing this, we can remove a lot of summer traffic over the bridge to other areas that we have to go in the city to cool off. Port Aransas has a splash pad, and they have four thousand residents. We have far more and no place to cool off. I'm hoping today we can introduce this idea and finally proceed. It's triple digits for Muntz County, South Texas. There's no shade at Gypsy Park. Our kids can't even use it without getting badly burned. The kids can't play in the vacant land because it's overrun with stickers and ants. We deserve something to keep our kids cool. The beach has very dangerous rips half the summer, putting our little ones at risk. Honestly, I'll tell you, you know, six and three-year-olds, the beach, when there's rips on one side and fast drunk drivers on the other, it feels really overwhelming as a parent to try to keep them contained on a small strip of sand. A splash pad would help us safely with our children. Children can't speak up here directly to you, but I'm here to speak up on their behalf. I think of all the memories to be made with their grandma, who's in a wheelchair and can't go to the beach with us. We are one of many families with elderly grandparents that want to take grandkids to play without feeling the pains that come with long commutes and fears of safety. Our island provides a ton of tax revenue. Our appraisals went up twenty percent last year, roughly a hundred thousand for each home. We would like to see something in return. This island also brings Corpus revenue through tourism with over one million visitors each year. Given the local demand for a pool, I think requesting a splash pad is a cost-effective place to start. We already have the support of local residents on our island community page, the support of parents at seashore schools, the support of many local businesses. I've received support from Commissioner Chessy, as well as Robert, who's the director of Parks and Rec here in Corpus. I've researched costs, designs, and sources for grants. I'm happy to share my findings with you. My proposal rests, and my hope is that you all explore this topic with me a little further. Thank you.
Hello?
Mr. Phelan, is that you? Christopher Phelan, okay. You can go ahead and proceed with your comment, Mr. Phelan.
Okay, Chris Phelan, 3806 Kingston Drive. You know, I'm here to talk about consent and about industrial zoning. You know, Donna Park, there are properties over there that were bought out because they're polluted. Our group, For the Greater Good, we wanted to go and do mitigation on those properties, but we don't want to go over there without the consent of the people over there who live in that neighborhood. Do you understand me? We don't want to go over there and plant bamboo without their consent. We don't want to go over there and plant trees on those vacant, polluted lots without their consent, all right? We can't use industrial water. We're under water restrictions. We go over there and plant plants to try to mitigate the pollution that the port put on those properties, and we can't use the water because you've got us on this phony drought restriction, right? But y'all are going to, y'all are going to expand the industrial zoning over there closer to the people who live in Donna Park. Once again, without the consent of those people, without properly informing them, you haven't put enough notice out for this. They're going to be pumping carbon dioxide around that community from other plants. And the Texas Railroad Commission, they're the entity that's supposed to be in charge of that. You know that they don't know about a pipeline leak for thirty days? The company doesn't have to tell them for thirty days, and that's only if it's lower than eighteen inches below the ground. If it's closer than eighteen inches, they don't even have to tell them. They don't even have to report it, right? We found that out because of the methanol leak over there in Hillcrest, right? And in the area where you want to put the desalination plant, all right? You talk about the safety of our neighborhoods. You talk about safety here. You want to condemn properties over safety, but you expand industrial districts without proper notification. North Beach is over there, they're going to be the next Fort Myers, right? The port and these things that you're doing are directly destroying our city, okay? And this hydrogen stuff is going to be more expensive to the, to the environment, and it's going to be more expensive to our communities. These are, these are, these are schemes. These are schemes, right? You're going to vote today about Freeze Nichols doing work on our, on our dam at Wesley Seal. How many times have they worked on our sewers that are under EPA oversight? Because what, they leak into, all over the place. They leak, they leak into the bay where you want to get our water. We do not consent to that. Hillcrest doesn't consent to desalination. There's going to be a big announcement about desalination.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
Especially tomorrow, and...
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Mayor, that concludes the public comment period.
Okay, so that concludes our public comment period, and we will go back to the city manager's report.
Right. Yes, ma'am. I just have one more item, Mayor, and it's on an important subject, which is breast cancer awareness and prevention. We know that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I personally want to thank the council for supporting many efforts to bring this to the attention of the community and to help in fundraising. There is an, I don't know if it's the final, but there's one more event this Saturday. It's called Awareness Walk. It'll be this Saturday, and it will conclude some of the big sponsored events to bring attention to breast cancer awareness. So this Saturday on October 29th is the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Fundraising Walk at one of our important partners, Texas A&amp;M University, Corpus Christi. The event begins with registration at 7:30 a.m. and opening ceremonies at the university, good job, councilman, at 8:30 a.m., and the walk will begin at 9 a.m. The event is a non-competitive 5K walk that is family and pet-friendly, right? Participants are encouraged to do what a lot of folks have been doing up here, was wear pink and wear your brightest shade of pink, councilman, right?
I'm wearing pink.
Yeah.
It's powder. Oh, you're wearing pink, so are you.
Good job, Councilman Hunter, and then...
Everyone to my left is not wearing pink. Oh, Ben is, okay. You've got, you've got pink on.
And the event does have, we know that there's, usually parking is limited, but free parking will be available at the university for the event this Saturday. So since 1993, the American Cancer Society Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Campaign has united communities, companies, and individuals with a collective goal to end breast cancer as we know it. This year, Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Event, the one that'll be this Saturday, this will be the thirtieth celebration or the thirtieth anniversary. The event raises life-saving funds that support breast cancer patients, survivors, and caregivers through every step of their journey, so an important fundraiser. We do encourage everyone to participate in the Making Strides fundraising event, and you could walk as an individual, you can join a team, or you can create your own team to participate this Saturday. There was a graphic up that showed the registration. It's CCTX.info. There we go on the bottom there, dot info forward slash Making Strides 2022, that's the website, or you can call that number that's listed, 361-371-8889, to register. So, Mayor, that concludes the three items that we did have on the city manager's report, and as Councilman Molina said, just to repeat again, on Thursday at 10 o'clock, I'll be at Cole Park Skate Park. There's been a tremendous revitalization of that really unique facility for all ages to enjoy and families, and so we'll see everybody there on Thursday. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Zanoni. Okay, well, that will take us to section I, our consent agenda items, numbers four through thirteen, and that, listen, do we have any requests, gentlemen, to pull? to pull any of the items, numbers four through 13, or any requests from the public for this public comment, or for public comment? And I believe what number, no, yours wouldn't fall under there.
I just want to ask a quick question on number 10.
Sure. You gonna pull 10?
Yes.
Okay, item number 10.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item 11.
Item number 11. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, I think it's item 12. I'm just gonna vote against it. That's the only reason. We don't have to pull it. I'm just voting it against it.
Well, it's on, yeah, we'd have, we'd have to pull it.
I mean, we've done it a million times without doing that, but sure. Let's pull it.
Okay, item number 12. Rebecca, that's your recommendation to pull it?
Yeah, just so we have, we can pull it. It's not a consent item.
Right, okay. Anyone else? Okay, there being no one else, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of items numbers 10, 11, and 12.
So move.
Okay, do we have a second?
Take it.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 10, let's see, that was pulled by Councilman Hernandez. Motion authorizing a professional services contract with Freeze and Nichols to provide design bid and construction phase services for Wesley Seal Dam instrumentation, rehabilitation. What is your question, Mr. Hernandez?
Well, I just wanted to bring this to the attention because I always get suspicious when there's a perfect score of some, when you do these things in it. And looking at the score that Freeze and Nichols got was 100 out of 100 points. And, you know, nobody's perfect in any aspect. So I'm wondering how, I mean, can you explain this process and how somebody got a perfect score on this? You know, I look at it in the sense of like Saddam Hussein was elected unanimously in his country, so it's, you know, that kind of thing, right?
Thank you, Councilman. Josh Cronin, Assistant Director for Finance and Security. The criteria established in the bidding score sheets, those are the benchmarks. And so if an applicant is able to meet that criteria, they're under instruction to score accordingly. So if no modification was needed, if they presented it in the light that showed that they were competent and capable of achieving all of the different benchmarks that were laid out. And I can say that this particular proposal, they did a great job of answering the, of answering the criteria.
Yeah, and probably that's the case because no, I don't know of any other company that's actually worked on our dams other than Freeze and Nichols, right? So, I mean, there's almost, there's almost no possibility for another company.
Highest-ranked national firm, yeah.
Right? There's almost no other opportunity for another company, but like I said, it's rare, very rare.
Well, we gave opportunity, but you corrected that when it came to the scoring, nobody was able to outshine them.
Right, because they have all the information that nobody does, right? They have the historical aspect of it. And I, I get it. They're probably the best person, the best company to do it based on their historical knowledge of us, but then, you know, that, I think there's some issues with that as well, so.
And I did pull those score sheets because I saw the same thing, and it is an average of the scores, and so there, it was, it rounds up, so it wasn't exactly a perfect 100, but in the rounding here, it shows.
Maybe you probably shouldn't have included the rounding.
Well, okay.
Even then.
Okay, okay. All right, we can do that.
How do we address this? Because obviously, if one company has exclusive information on our systems, did we, did we give them, other companies afford them the opportunity to actually visit the site and go through it and look at review documentation from previous work that was done? Has that happened?
We do that in most of our bids. I think this was, this was just a...
Did these companies actually visit the site?
Did we have a location for this RFQ? Yes, we did have site visits for this RFQ.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we give fair opportunity to all participants, every company. I don't want any preferential treatment. And so anytime I see something like this, it raises a red flag. So just for the purposes of making sure that we don't end up like some other entities that have issues about preferential treatment, I won't mention any names, okay? I just want to make sure that we look at this and make sure that we're doing everything possible to make sure that the process is fair as possible.
That is absolute goal.
Okay.
Written into policy.
Right. There's a pre-bid conference as well, Josh?
Correct.
And participants could have asked questions, or if they wanted special tours, they could have asked for them in the pre-bid conference.
Additional materials, correct. We have a question.
So there was no exclusivity then given to one company over another?
None whatsoever.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, because, I mean, the scores weren't even close. I mean, 78 and 58 respectively, right? So.
And sometimes people use boilerplate, you know, the firms that apply to multiple jobs sometimes use boilerplate information, and the, and so it doesn't have some of the detail listed in the criteria, and it's much easier when.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I get it. I get it. I mean, like I said.
When they target you, though, and that's what the Freeze and Nichols did, they really brought forward the information, and they were the incumbent, so they had some information.
Just be aware that, you know, scrutiny, okay? Thank you.
Understood.
Yeah. Councilman Hunter?
Yeah, that... Who's speaker is that? That's really, it, there's like an echo. Let me see. Okay, yeah, and Greg, I think it's your turn. Just a tad. Okay, no, so you don't have a question, Councilman?
I don't have a question.
Okay, not a problem.
So move to approve.
Do we have a second? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 11, yes, item number 11. Who pulled 11? Councilman Smith.
I guess, so we heard earlier public comment on this, Josh. Why is this bid determined non-responsive?
Councilman, we, on further scrutiny of the bid itself, there's, looking at the, comparing the engineering probable cost to the actual bid, there's quite a big delta in one of the line items. And part of our job is to mitigate risk. When we bring forward something to council, we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to protect the tax dollar. And we feel like that if we were to take the lowest bidder there, that we may end up in a situation where there isn't enough money in that line at that price to be able to do that work. And it creates a risk for us.
Well, you just know when we're doing per-item bidding, I don't know if they made a mistake on it, or a lot of times you load up items and you discount other items, which is very common practice in the industry. Do you take that in consideration?
We did, but the delta on this particular line is in about 400,000. And without, without getting into more details of their bid, it would be hard for us to be able to make that. And so, again, there's just a large amount of risk on the city if we were to proceed that way.
I guess, are we evaluating all bids like this? This scrutiny on individual items with, in a past life, I used to bid. So, yes, I see there's a big delta on it and stuff, and as I go over the other items, there are other deltas on the other side with it, too. And so the consideration would be what the contractors experience in projects of this, what's their track record. They're bonded, of course, and I completely understand our concern, want to make sure we get a job done efficiently and without having to go back on the bonding company with it. But, you know, the importance of consistency is we're evaluating with it. And so, do we have any kind of delta type, is it an ad hoc, or do you have some formulas that you go by with it?
We rely on outside engineering firms occasionally to help with the bid tabulation. And so when this was brought, you know, it was highlighted, it was brought to attention, it was highlighted, we looked further into it, and that's what brought the, that's what brought to our attention, and that's why we decided to.
Okay. And was the contractor given the ability to honor the bid?
They were.
And what was their reply?
They would.
They would. And, okay. Okay, thank you. And I'm gonna kind of jump to a little bit different on this. So this is part of the Broadway Treatment Plant. You know, we all spent a lot of time visiting, when we put the budget together, over three years, $1.15 billion. And this is one of the many projects on there. And at the time, the mayor asked a question, and some of us were concerned about the overall cost of that. Well, what would you change? And my comment at the time is, I don't have a clue on it. And if we're going down this path with it of, we've been spending about $81 million a year on our utilities with it, and that's pretty consistent. At seven-year average is 81 million. The last three years, 82 million dollars with it. Now, we're talking about going to a $400 million a year. And we know it's gonna have significant impacts on rates with it. They'll be coming in later rather than sooner on it. I was going through the November 2016 STANTEC report, which was a very comprehensive report that identified, this is for our wastewater system, identified all the needs on there. And at that point in time, they identified a one-to-five year plan, about $220 million on there, which we've done a lot. And what I am kind of suggesting, and for this council to consider, should we be going and taking, getting an outsider, like the STANTEC report, again, a very comprehensive evaluation, in this case, of our wastewater system on it, to look at all these projects? That second opinion, so to speak, in the STANTEC report, they prioritized things, what were top priorities. And a lot of the stuff, for example, the headworks at the Oso plant that was completed last year was one of the several of the projects with it. And in the last part of that STANTEC report, is they looked at our operational practices. Now, we need to be aware here at this council how we sit with the rest of wastewater systems in the state. We're not good. TML publishes a report on there. We're at 95%, so only 5% of wastewater systems charge more. In the STANTEC report, they addressed our operational, where we can help out on operational. They looked at three things. They looked at manpower on there. They looked at chemicals with it, and then utilities. In all three areas, we were higher. And all I'm suggesting here, I think city manager, you as the CEO, Mr. Murphy, you as the CEO of the utilities, and particularly this council, we would behoove all of us to have a good look at our utility systems considering what the impacts are going to be. This, this is the largest single investment that this city is committed to ever. And it's just, I'm not saying today should, but it possibly, we should at some point in time, if council gives a thought to a motion or direction, that we do take a hard look and for it. So I know this is one of those many projects. That's why I'm talking about it with it. So, thank you, Josh. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to go back to this bid tabulation and how you made your nexus on this, that there was a $600,000 difference.
400,000. Was, well, okay, I'm sorry, you're talking between the bids.
There's a, overall, there's $300,000 between the second lowest bid and this bid, from 2.7 million to 3 million, right?
Yes, sir.
So it's about $300,000 difference. And the line item you highlighted, there's a $600,000 difference between what they identified as a $1.20 per item, and then the other two bids were around 600,000. But you have the exact same amount in the bid for backfill where this bidder was $600,000 more than the other two bidders. So you kind of, it's kind of a wash. So why did you key in on this one line item when another line item had the $600,000 kind of replaced?
Well, we don't truly know their cost on doing those items, and so when it's presented in the way that it is, I have to assume that his cost for those items are what he put. But I just happen to know that he cannot do, you know, for a $1.20 per linear foot. It's just, it's...
Well, to Councilman Smith's comment on where they move stuff around, I mean, you have a $600,000 difference in two different sections. So it's kind of a wash, right? So regardless of what they put down, the amount we're talking about difference between the two bids is 300,000. It's not 600,000.
But it comes down to a tracking and enforceability, you know.
For one line item.
On every line.
Josh, if I can, Councilman, he admitted that his price was too low on that one item. Is that correct?
He did.
He did. So there's no way he can get it done for $1.20. We don't recommend we hire them, because what we think's gonna happen is they're gonna come back and do a change order. He, the owner of the company, admitted, I can't really get that done for $1.20. That was an error, but I'll stand by my bid. We just don't see it. Our recommendation is to not, is to not award that contract and go to the next lowest bidder.
Okay, but the difference is $300,000, right?
The overall, right.
We're not talking 600,000. Okay, so my next question is, does this company have a track record of not fulfilling their obligations?
Turn your microphone on.
I'm sorry, I wasn't close to it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Does this company have a track record of not fulfilling their obligations?
No.
They don't. So they, so what you're saying is that they do fulfill, they do have a track record of doing their, what they claim to do.
The answer to that, Councilman, is we don't have a very strong record of a lot of work with American payment, and that was one of the...
Have they done any work with us before?
They've done a work on a project as a subcontractor, nothing to this extent. And for that fact, that was one of the contributing factors to us making the decision, determining if we was gonna go with that bid or not.
Look.
As the city manager stated, that they specifically stated, hey, we made a mistake. We can't meet the job or that specific line item at that price. And because of that...
But they said they would honor the price.
They said they will honor it, but they admitted that they couldn't. And because of that fact...
So the guy came up and said that that was not the case, that they would meet, they would honor the price that they, that they bid, right?
Yes, and then...
And then I looked at other line items, saying there was a $600,000 difference that made up for that 600,000 that they didn't.
Yes, sir, but that puts us in a position like, as, and Jeff's not here right now, but that puts us in a position where one of two things can happen. They could try to make up that work where we'd be overpaying via change orders, or they can abandon the work. And the retainage that we have on the contract is less than the $300,000 that they could stand to lose as they did, decided it's gonna grow out and fill that pipe. So that's why we were saying that we're putting ourselves in a vulnerable position, accepting this contract. It's best that we decide to deem it non-responsive and go with the next lowest bid.
Right, that's exactly right. Just so the city, three and a half years ago, we put ourselves in too much risk. As a city manager, I'm recommending to our engineering department and the council and the taxpayer, we don't do that.
Absolutely.
We just almost lost, or we pretty much did lose, in my estimation, a massive lawsuit on the Broadway, the same plant.
Right.
Because we hired a company that had the lowest price, that couldn't do it, that was from Canada. We selected them anyway, and then we went to court and spent millions of dollars trying to defend the city taxpayer. So we're recommending, we don't think they can do it. That's our recommendation.
Right, and that is, you know, there's a fine line. We are not operations. We are policy. Your recommendation is to protect the taxpayer dollar. That's the bottom line. So that's it. It's that simple.
Right, exactly.
You're saying, we don't do what you do. You guys are saying, here's why we shouldn't do it. And guys, we're not gonna keep getting into the weeds. We don't work in offices upstairs. We make policy here. So that recommendation is what's standing today. Does anyone have any other issues?
Mayor, if I can finish my thought, you're asking us to do an ordinance not to accept the lowest bidder. So I have to disagree with you that it is policy. So, I mean, unless this company has a track record of not meeting their, you know, obligations and nice things, I'm hard-pressed to say that these people are scumbags and can't do this job.
No one is saying that. Let's pull that back.
I'm making a euphemism here. So, I mean, we're basically saying, we don't believe that they're gonna do, fulfill their obligation, and that reflects on them as a company.
We're saying we don't, we don't recommend the taxpayer take the risk, Councilman.
We're talking $300,000, right?
That's a lot of money.
Well, yeah, I know, but we're, I mean, you know, we're talking demolition here, right? We're not talking construction. We're not talking, you know, that this is gonna be...
Again, we don't think the taxpayer should take the risk.
Councilman?
You know, I get it. I get it. I just, I will be voting no against this because I think you're wrong.
Okay.
Thank you.
The $10,000.
Motion to approve, item 11 is submitted.
Absolutely. If we have a second, I know we still have, we have some discussion, but is there, there's a motion in a second.
I don't need to discuss.
Councilman, no, make your comment. Councilman Barera was actually first.
I'm not gonna belabor it, but I've said before, when there's questionable, when there's questions with regard to the procurement process, then it just hurts our credibility. And so I think when we have issues like this, obviously, the individual had some information that contradicted what we were told. And so I just urge you as professionals...
And so, I just urge you as professionals to recognize that, you know, it's almost, and I hate to simplify it like I was talking to a child, but it's almost, well, it's because I said. And I think that, once again, that hurts our credibility, because once again, and I mean, I'm happy we're giving it to somebody local, you know? I think there was a similar project of which Gamacho was also the second bidder, and the variance was much greater on the other wastewater treatment plant, or the one that's over there by, what is it, the one that's over there, it's Cordillabond Park?
Yeah.
Yeah. There was a, there was an even greater disparity, I think almost a million dollars. And I talked to the engineer, because I thought that, I asked Hansen, felt very comfortable, and I was confident with their, their explanation. So, once again, I think when we tend to leapfrog, you know, we just need to make sure everybody understands. So, that's it. But I'm going to vote for it, okay? But I think we need to sharpen the saw on fixer system.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hunter, did you have a...
I mean, I was just going to say, this is a local group, you know, it's, and for me, I'm trying to push something in the future on local preference policy that we've discussed up here as council. Maybe we should get an update on where we are with that. But I think this is great, and I'm ready, ready to go for it.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, so, we have Councilman Smith and Councilman Hernandez is saying no. Item number 12 is a motion approving, that was the, the last item, I'm sorry, the last item pulled, and that was Councilman Hunter, motion approving the 2022 property tax levy.
Sure. I mean, I just, I voted against this the first time around. I didn't, you know, I didn't know that we were going to have to pull it, but since we do, I guess I'll, I'll say a few things. This is a 7% to 8% tax increase that we associate with a 3.5% tax increase, because y'all say, why is it a 3.5 versus a 7 to 7.1, 8%?
I'm Heather Holbert, Director of Finance. So, the 3.5% applies to the maintenance and operation rate for existing properties. So, the properties that were in place last tax year, tax year '21 versus tax year '22. The 7% includes all of the new improvements, so new construction, new improvements to existing properties. So, it's not just an organic increase in that value.
Associated with interest and all that stuff, right? So, we could actually do a flat and no increase and still keep all the new stuff.
Yes, so, what this levy...
We could have. We can't now. It's too late.
Exactly. So, I mean, this item basically is, all it's doing is taking the tax rate that was approved by city council, applying it against the total valuation of the levy, of the appraised values, just to show what the actual tax levy will be.
Yes, ma'am.
This is step number three in the process.
Thank you. Now, I just wanted an explanation, because if I say it, no one believes it anyways, because I'm always against taxes, so. And that, you know, I've, I've just, I just think it should be lower. I think it's great that we did lower the rate, but when you have a 700 to 800 million-dollar budget, which our finance department can date back to seven years ago, y'all did an excellent job with the city with 700 to 800 million dollars. Now, we almost have double that budget, and we're still raising taxes? And for people like me, where it's difficult, I don't take mom and dad's money like everybody thinks I do. Well, maybe for Sunday dinners, because Greg doesn't feed me, but...
Come by Sunday.
You got an open invitation.
Right.
Double meat water burger.
It's difficult. It's difficult for the younger generation, starting families, paying all kinds of different stuff, so. It's not what I want to be representing, and that's why I'm voting no.
Councilman Barera.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think something that would make this easier, because obviously, being on the campaign trail, it's all the, my colleagues and I were at an event the other day, and it was very, it was, it was very comforting, because Gil and I were on the same team almost the whole evening. Because, anyway, well, it's just that the opposition was just basically throwing bombs at the existing council. But if, say, for example, you gave us the information of all the new growth and put a valuation to that, because I think that's, that's the same argument that I've been approached by, well, you exceeded this at 3.5%. And I said, well, no, not necessarily, because we've got new growth, as well as all appreciation and interfered development. And my colleague and I have had some, some fun debates on that. But I think it just helps us a little bit more to understand how much of that is new growth. I mean, there's a ton of new growth out in the London area, obviously, a lot of values out there, which, you know, those individuals there, and I'm not trying to debate, I'm just saying it just helps us make better decisions. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. I voted against this as well during the discussion, but can you tell us exactly now that we've got it all, what was the no new revenue rate increase? Or whatever the terminology is?
It, that, that hasn't changed. It was the 5.58.
Round it up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't have that written down, so it's the point of...
5.58?
5.58, or 58 cents. It was the same, that, the no new revenue rate has not, had no change.
No, no, that's not what I'm asking. What's the increase above the no new revenue rate, percentage-wise? Because it doesn't take into consideration the new growth, right? Did this, we're talking about the existing, right? So, we're talking about the, what is that final number of our, or the increase over the no new revenue rate? Because we're, we're limited for operations and maintenance at 3.5%. We move stuff over to debt service. So, what is the actual, what used to be called the effective tax rate? What is the increase over the percentage?
I do not have that in front of me. I apologize.
So, when we talked about it, it was somewhere around 6, 6.3 at the time, when we were discussing it. We didn't finalize the number. Can you get that number to us as to what that is?
Sure.
It's like, well, it, five, it's like six. I want to say around it to six at the time. So, what's that final number?
Sure.
And I will also be voting no on this. Thank you.
Councilman Pasley.
Well, I just want to say, the no new rate, no new revenue rate, which is what the state of Texas has adopted to replace the old effective tax rate.
Exactly.
Was 0.57 and some change.
Exactly.
And I'm sorry, I don't remember all the decimal points. So, round it up to 0.58. That doesn't include the, or does it include, Heather, the credit, or the amount of new property values that came online only this year?
That, that does not, or the, within that calculation, you exclude the new properties that came onto the tax rolls as of 1/1/22.
And we, and we get, we don't get punished for that new growth rate when we calculate our tax rate.
That is correct. It is not, we're not bound by the 3.5%
Right.
of the increase in MNO for those new properties. So, the, the no new...
The 3.5% increase is based on everything above the new growth amount.
Below, below, anything that was existing.
Yes.
So, it's, it is the year-over-year same properties.
Right.
What will produce the no new revenue rate is the rate that'll produce the same revenue on the same properties based off the valuation in the current year.
Right, that's the NNR number.
That is the NNR number, yes.
But my point is, the stuff, the valuations above that...
Yes.
We don't, that doesn't get applied to...
No.
If we vote above the new revenue rate, we would get that credit anyway.
Yes.
Okay, so, the percentage increase of tax increase that we're doing is based on the amount above that?
Yes.
Okay, and that's the true number percentage of what we did.
Yes.
But you said something a while ago to, in response, Mr. Hunter, you said, when he said, we could have done all this without an increase, did you mean not an increase in the no new revenue rate? Because I don't think we could have done that. That would have meant we had to cut the budget by 25 million dollars.
No, what I was saying is that the no new revenue rate did not, because that, that is a static number, no matter what the tax rate is that the council sets, that no new revenue rate does not, did not change. There was nothing that changed that, because that's based off of the calculation. And I, I don't believe I said that we could have, I'm not sure exactly what I said there.
It's okay, many times I don't remember.
I'm like, I'm not, I'm not sure. I can't rewind that. I'm not sure what I said, but that, exactly, that was, that was not my intention. I'll just say that. But, yeah, the no new revenue rate hasn't changed. That always stays the same.
Yeah, so, I'll agree with what Councilman Barrera was saying here, is in, in future budgets, if I'm still here, I think it's important for us to do a better job of explaining that to the public. And I don't, I know it's difficult to understand, as I said during our budget process, the state of Texas made it as complicated and as difficult to understand as they possibly could do.
Yes.
And they always have, even when it was the way it was before, when we still had effective tax rate. It was not easy for people to understand. So, but we need to do the best job we can of explaining what, what it means when you have the no new revenue rate, what the amount of property values are above that, that was new growth
Exactly.
that we get credit for, and then what the tax increase is above that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Okay, well, with that, we'll entertain a motion to approve item number 12.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
So, Councilman Hunter and Councilman Hernandez, motion carries. That takes us over to section K, public hearings, items number 14 through 16. Item number 14 is case number 0922-01, Ryan Thurman in District 3. Is someone presenting on this?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we recessed for lunch. It's almost 1:30, and lunch has been back there for an hour.
Well, no one told me lunch was back there, but we're planning on going to lunch at 1:30.
Okay.
What, what time is, is lunch there?
Yes.
Oh, did you send me a message?
A motion to approve? No.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I thought we'd get one in here.
Call the question.
I was, what? What's that?
Call the question.
Called the question.
Call the question, 1415, motion to approve.
My God, y'all, are you starving, Councilman? You're hungry, okay.
Yeah, but...
It is, all right. We've got, I know, they're grown boys. Okay, Al Raymond, I'm going to give in to the boys.
If you want lunch, that's fine.
Okay, let, let's, let's break for lunch early, 1, whatever, 15, 17. And, yes, after what?
We can do executive session.
Well, no, I'm trying to appease you guys who want to eat.
I'm just at 2 o'clock with you.
I know. Or 2:30, what's that?
We're going to do executive session too.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we do. Yeah, no, I'd like to start fresh at the next, at the next section. So, we'll go ahead and do that, and we've got, let's see, where is it?
Two executive sessions, Mayor.
Two, right. Okay, let's see. So, the council will go into executive session on item, item number 25 and 26, per Texas Government Code, section 551.071. We'll return. I thought you could listen.
I need to exit.
That's my job.
Mayor, we're ready.
Okay. We'll reconvene the meeting. And do we have a motion or any action? Gentlemen?
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to authorize the execution of all documents of the estate of Emilio Mojica deceased versus City of Corpus Christi, Philip Peterson in his individual capacity, Antonio Contreras in his individual capacities, Zachary Rogers in his individual capacity, and Jimmy Leal in his individual capacity, in exchange for the city funds previously authorized for attorneys, experts, and service providers to assist in this lawsuit, plus an additional city-provided amount not to exceed $50,000.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no.
No.
Okay. The motion carries.
Mayor, I have a motion to make. It's a motion to authorize the execution of amendments, agreements, and encumbrance of funds for legal, engineering, and other professional consulting and expert witness services, and associated court reporter, copy, travel, data, and other costs for the lawsuit of Grand Construction Services, Inc., versus City of Corpus Christi, Xylem Water Solutions, and Atlas Copco Compressors, versus Correlo Engineers, P.C., Travelers Casualty and Security Company, Control Panels, USA, Inc., and Fluid Components International, LLC, in a total added amount not to exceed $1.5 million, with the law firms of Kilpatrick, Townsend, and Stockton, LLP, and Heartline Barger, LLP, and authorize carryover of unexpended funds into the following fiscal years.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. The motion carries. And that will take us to Section K, Public Hearings Items 14 through 16. Item number 14 is case number 0922-01, Ryan Thurman, District 3.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The case before you is to rezone the property located at 7017 Air Street from FR Farm Rule District to IL Light Industrial.
There it is.
Hello?
Yeah, it's okay. Turn back on.
Sorry. The property is 1.592 acres in size, and it is platted. The applicant is Ryan Thurman. The purpose of the rezoning is to allow for the construction of a boat repair facility with a marine construction office. The property is part of the South Side Area Development Plan. The plan and the future land use map designates this area as agricultural rural enterprise. If approved, this rezoning will warrant an amendment to the future land use map. To the north are vacant properties zoned RS6. To the south, at Oso Creek is, of course, the city limits. To the east and west of the subject property are vacant properties zoned FR Farm Rule District. Two notices were mailed out within the 200-foot notification area. Zero were returned in opposition. Zero were returned in favor. The proposed rezoning is inconsistent with the future land use map. However, it is consistent with many broader elements of the city's comprehensive plan. The industrial uses are typically located near major transportation routes, and this site is somewhat appropriate. The proposed development is also compatible with the surrounding area. However, this site is within the cabinist field, military compatibility area, overlay districts, light and vertical obstruction subzones. The light subzone obviously regulates light to prevent visual interference during nighttime training operations. The visual obstruction subzone regulates the height of structures and elements within the flight zone. The proposed development, although not included in the clear zone, our accident potential zone one and two, it does have a floor area ratio of .14, which means that the structure that can be built on the site is a little under 10,000 square feet. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval, and I stand by for any questions.
I don't see any questions, so I'm going to go ahead and, or lights, I'm going to go ahead and open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make any public comment on item number 14? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Mayor, I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. The motion carries. Item number 15 is case number 0922-02, HEP Havelina Company, LLC, located in District 1.
Mayor, can I?
Yes, sir.
Quick statement?
Sure.
Just on the Roberts Rules of Order of public hearings, as long as we call the public hearing and ask the public if they want to speak, we are able to vote on and after, just for the record.
We're able to vote on what?
We're able to push forth the vote afterwards.
Oh.
There's a, we're making a motion to approve the ordinance, there is discussion.
This is a great product, project. We've already heard about it. This is a clean energy group. We're the Havelina.
I see.
And if they do not want to come up and speak, we have to make the announcement of a public hearing.
Right.
And the mayor has the opportunity to close it. If they don't want to come up and speak, we can vote on it.
Sure. Correct. Right? Yeah. Okay.
Well, I think it was trying to save me time, right?
That's exactly what it was trying to do.
Trying to get back up here so we can serve it all, the mayor.
Yeah.
Get behind it next time around.
Okay. Shall I?
So you're basically saying, move to approve?
Yep. So you don't want to hear Mr., his presentation, you're ready to move forward?
He can stand there. Let me make a motion to approve.
I'd like to hear some.
Okay. Councilman Smith would like to hear some of his president.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council, councilman. The case before you is to rezone the property located at 1230 McBride Lane from IL Light Industrial District to IH Heavy Industrial District. The property, the subject property is approximately 17.49 acres in size, and it consists of approximately 34 lots of various sizes and shapes. Two of those 34 lots are platted, the remainder are not, which needs to be platted. The applicant is HPE Havelina Corpus Christi, LLC. The proposed land use is for the development of a small-scale commercial demonstration project to showcase Infineum Technology for the conversion of carbon dioxide and hydrogen into cleaner synthetic fuels and chemicals. The property is located on the West Side Area Development Plan, and the plan and the future land use map calls for light industrial uses. To the north are light industrial uses and professional offices zoned IL Light Industrial. To the south of the subject property are industrial uses and some vacant land zoned IL Light Industrial. To the east across Union Street is heavy industrial uses, zone IH Heavy Industrial. And to the west across McBride Lane are light industrial uses, also zoned IL Light Industrial. 16 notices were mailed out within the 200-foot notification area. Zero were returned in opposition. Zero were returned in favor. The proposed rezoning is inconsistent with the future land use map, which calls for light industrial uses. However, the industrial areas are typically located near major transportation routes, which makes this site somewhat perfect. The proposed development is also compatible with the surrounding area. Therefore, Planning Commission and staff recommend approval, and I stand by for any questions. And of course, as you know, the applicant is here as well.
Councilman Smith?
Thank you. I know we're trying to get this through, but I'd like just a real quick brief on the process, what you're planning to do, and then if you could tell us, we get a lot of citizen concern here about where we're moving as far as green industry. How does this project fit into that in the low-carbon economy?
Mayor, can you open the public hearing? Yes, let me go ahead and open public hearing and come on down to the podium, please.
Again, Mayor, Councilman, and City Manager, thanks again for letting us speak on this project. As I mentioned, my name is Frank Van Horn. I do work, represent Howard Energy Partners, that owns the Havelina plant. The address for the Havelina plant is 5438 McBride Lane. And this is Roger Harris, he's the COO of Infineum, who's our partner on this venture that we're doing. Just to give you, and I'll keep this very brief, but Howard Energy Partners, give you a little bit of background of us. We are a midstream oil and gas company. We have operations in four states, and also internationally, going into providing natural gas into Mexico. And we have deep South Texas roots. Our CEO, Mike Howard, is from Aqua Dulce, just about 30 minutes, or 30 miles down the road on Highway 44. And our COO, Brandon Birch, is from Cal Allen, just here on the north side of town. Not to mention the 50 employees that we employ out at Havelina, and also the employees that we have on the other side of the Ship Channel, we have a terminal over there called Maverick Terminals. At Howard, we're a purpose-driven company, and that purpose is to deliver positive energy. And we think of that as twofold, not just providing affordable, reliable energy for all our customers, but also for bringing positive impacts to the communities that we operate in. And what we really get excited about is when we combine those two. And so that's what this project is really all about. It's bringing a first-in-the-state clean hydrogen facility here to Corpus Christi. As I mentioned earlier, it's going to take hydrogen and carbon dioxide from our facility that otherwise would have been, the carbon dioxide, carbon dioxide otherwise would have been vented. And it's going to take that carbon dioxide, take the hydrogen, and convert it into electrofuels, which is essentially, as Roger can tell you, it's a drop-in fuel for gas, diesel, jet fuel. It is considered ultra-low carbon. If you were to use this process with renewable energy, our project is actually going to have lower carbon dioxide emissions than if you were doing this with renewable energy. It's essentially taking the carbon dioxide that would have been vented and using it in this process. We think the impact that it's going to have on the city from a positive aspect of green energy is going to be tremendous, with very little impact, as was stated earlier. It's already in an industrial zone. It's right next to a heavy industrial facility. So we think that it's going to bring really great benefit to the city and to the state. But I'll let Roger talk to a little bit more about the actual process itself.
Well, and one quick question. What kind of investment are you looking at in this pilot? So this is within the city limits, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So what, what do you think that's going to, that impact?
I'm going to let Roger talk to that, because they're the ones that are actually building it. It's our property that they're using, but they're the ones that are building it.
Honorable Mayor, council members, City Manager, thanks for, thanks for the opportunity to address here. And first and foremost, thanks to our partners, Howard Energy, and also to the City of Corpus Christi, who have been and continue to be very supportive of our project. As Mr. Van Horn already spoke about, the project looks to use renewable energy, so we'll be using renewable electricity generated here in the state of Texas, and then through an electrolysis process, convert that into hydrogen. The hydrogen is then combined with CO2 that would otherwise be emitted into the atmosphere, and it makes a fuel that is essentially, to the smell, touch, and taste, the same as diesel and aviation fuel that we currently use. The, the opportunity that this project presents is obviously for partners such as some of our investors, like Amazon, to decarbonize their supply chain by putting this fuel into their planes and their trucks rather than, rather than fossil-derived fuels. The opportunity, as Mr. Van Horn has said, that it presents to Corpus Christi is that first and foremost, it will be the first of its kind in the country, possibly even in the world. It employs hydrogen, which, as we all know, is much talked about hydrogen economy. Senator Cornyn has spoken about it quite profusely as being a future-looking technology for the Texas industry. It uses that hydrogen technology, combining it with some of the existing technologies, and essentially works with equipment and with skill sets that are very much in line with traditional oil and gas to produce, to produce this renewable fuel. At the end of the day, the project will be our first demonstration one, but we hope to have significant expansion in the future. And this project itself, once operational, will employ 25 people from the local community.
So you're really leading edge. You're going to put an electrolysis unit in there, so this, this is green hydrogen and not blue hydrogen?
That's correct. So this will be, this will be green hydrogen.
Okay. And then you're going to have the chemical process to capture the CO2 that if we didn't vent, it would probably go into a carbon capture, but that eliminates that.
It does, correct.
Okay. I mean, this, this is really cutting-edge stuff. I thank Howard Energy, and I thank you all for, for doing this. And, you know, this is going in our tax base, too. So we, we hear a lot of comments up here at this DIAS about how we should not be doing this, but, you know, this is going into our tax base. It's going for a low-carbon future with it. It's going to create jobs, it's going to create taxes on there. So I, I'd like the folks out there that, they need to keep this in mind with it. So, thank you. And just one last comment. I was looking on the title. That property was owned by, at one point in time, Matt Dunn, who came here in 1845. He was one of three survivors in Zachary Taylor's Army for the supply train to Monterey. And that, that's kind of sandy soil, so back then, it was hard to plow our heavy black soils with it. So they picked that area, it was cotton farms with it, they lived in what's Corpus, what we'd call the C District today, and one of the first cotton shins in this area was located. So there's your quick little history lesson on that.
Straight from your book.
Yep.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for everyone's time.
Thank you. We actually have another question here. Councilman Pasley, or comment, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this is a good project, and for all the reasons that Councilman Smith brought up. I'm a little more skeptical about what we're, green and blue, and yellow and green hydrogen are going. I'm waiting to see how this is all going to work out. If you took, if you stood on this property and took a rock and threw it really, really hard, you'd hit the side of the house where I grew up. I grew up in the Donna Park subdivision. And always before, Upriver Road was kind of the boundary for heavy industry, and I know there's been some light parts of that that have crept across Upriver Road. So I guess my question, Mr. Raymond, you know, once we, if we give this property I-3 designation, and let's say a few years down, and I hope you're very successful, but let's say-
and let's say a few years down, and I hope you're very successful, but let's say a few years down the road, they decide that they're going to move their operation somewhere else or it doesn't work out, then we now have a piece of property across Upriver Road that's been zoned I-3, which means a lot of things.
Heavy industrial, yes.
And so is this project more suited for a special permit kind of thing, where we would structure it for the zoning for what they're doing, such that the city would have a little more control on the back end if that didn't work out?
So that's a great question. But you notice on McBride Lane to the west is light industrial, to the north is light industrial, across Union Street, I think it is, it's heavy industrial, and to the south is light industrial. So it's, so even if their heavy industrial rezoning, for whatever reason, doesn't work out or whatever, that zoning is still compatible with what's around there. So you may say, yeah, but that's just light industrial. But it's segregated for a reason and a purpose to flourish where it is, per se, right?
Well, the difference I've always used between IH3 and I-2 zoning is the light industrial, you can't have a smokestack, the I-3 you can. So I just, I have some concern. There's still a subdivision over to, what, southwest?
Further to the, right, exactly.
And in the wintertime, the prevailing breezes come across that area headed for that subdivision. So I just worried a little bit about what might happen in the future. That's just a point I wanted to make.
It's a great point. A special permit could be given that wouldn't kill this project, but it's whatever this council would like. Planning Commission recommended approval. Staff recommended approval, so it's up to this body what you'd like to do.
Yeah. And I respect that, I really do. But the fact that, I'm very familiar with that area. I grew up in that area. We lived next to those refineries. I grew up a stone's throw from American smelting and breathed God knows what. In fact, sometimes you turn the lights off at night and I'd glow in the dark. So...
What? What?
It's an old joke.
I want to try that.
But you know, it's, and lived through multiple refinery explosions in that area where the refineries actually. So I have a different sensitivity point about this area, and there are a lot of my friends who still live in that area that I, you know, grew up with and know. So just a point.
Councilman Hyder.
Sure. I'd just like to apologize about trying to rush your project. It's not that I think your project's great. I think our council members bring us some great issues, especially from Mr. Experienced. Mr. Pusley spent a lot of time in those, in that field and industry. Just when we have good projects, I like to push them through because that means we get the opportunity to get more good projects. And you know, Councilman Smith, as much as he is looking forward to running again this time around, we all appreciate his history lessons for five minutes of our time, while we're missing four votes every hour of not waving a sign outside to be back here. So thank you. I think your project's great. It has nothing to do with you, and I appreciate you guys and what you're doing. Thank you.
One last question, and I'm sorry, was it Mark? Because it was about the investment. Roger? I'm sorry. What was, what is the investment here?
Well, we self-constraining, and so I must probably not quite at liberty to go into full details of that. My apologies on the...
Just give us a hint.
We're talking tens of millions of dollars.
Tens of millions, okay.
Here in terms of investment.
Enough said. This is wonderful. As was mentioned, you know, it's inside the, inside our city limits, it is diversifying our economic development footprint. And that is what we're interested in, and that's what we're happy about. We truly are very, I mean, always concerned. But I welcome the new jobs. I welcome the tens of million investment, and we really, we appreciate you. We appreciate you being here as well and your partnership because this is, that's really putting us on the map. This is a truly green project, and that's the way this is going, and you all will know that. So thank you for your time today, and we look forward to, you know, working together moving forward to make things happen right here in Corpus Christi.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Absolutely, absolutely. With that, I'll go ahead and open the floor to open, I mean, public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to make public comment on item number 15? Okay, there being no one, we will close public hearing, and I will entertain a motion to approve item number 15.
There's a motion in a second on the floor.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Oh, you're a no.
Okay.
Okay. The motion carries. Item number 16 is case number 0922-03, Douglas N. and Joyce Posey in District 1.
Again, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The case before you is to rezone the property located at 14446 Northwest Boulevard from CG2 General Commercial District and RS6 Single Family 6th District to CG2 General Commercial District. The property is approximately .47 acres in size, and it is not planted. And as you said, the applicant is Douglas and Joy Posey. The purpose of this rezoning request is for the expansion of an existing veterinarian clinic in that area. The property falls within the Northwest Area Development Plan. The plan and the future land use map designate this area to be mixed use. To the north of this subject property or vacant, is a vacant property zoned RS6. To the south, is a commercial property zoned CG2. To the east is a law office and a small church zoned RS6 and ON, Neighborhood Office. And to the west are commercial properties and offices zoned CG2 and ON. Nine notices were mailed out within a 200-foot notification area. Zero were returned in opposition, zero were returned in favor. Although this rezoning is inconsistent with the future land use map, it is consistent with many broader elements of the city's comprehensive plan. This zoning fits within the character of the neighborhood. This business has been running successfully since the 1980s. However, CG2 zoning districts allow for uses such as bars, which may not be compatible with the surrounding area. Therefore, city staff recommended denial of the requested zoning in lieu of an ONSP, Neighborhood Office District, with a special permit. The conditions were to authorize a special permit other than uses permitted in the base zoning district by right where veterinarian and/or animal hospital uses. And a type A buffer would be required because of its adjacency to a single-family district. Conditions, as always, of a special permit do not preclude compliance with other development requirements of the UDC, the Building Fire Code, Health Code. And this special permit would be deemed expired within 12 months unless plat is submitted. However, Mayor and Council, Planning Commission chose to ignore staff's recommendations, and Planning Commission voted to approve the zoning change from CG2 General Commercial District and RS6 Single Family 6th District to CG2 General Commercial District. And that's where we are today, and I stand by for questions.
Councilman Pusley.
Well, and I'll defer to the District 1 Councilmember, but I like the special permit much better. This is a highly dense residential area, and I'm sure our friends that live in those houses would not approve of us putting a bar right behind where they live.
That's exactly why we propose a special permit.
And so I think your special permit recommendation is spot-on, and I would support that.
Councilman Lerman.
And I'm going to, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to definitely agree with my councilman at large. This area, I really would not like to see any kind of bars. The special permit is more in my favor that I would vote for. You know, I think it's a great project. I think we need to continue to do what we need to do with the veterinarians. This area, we need the veterinarians out in that area because it's still a lot of county. There's still a lot of things that they deal with, and that's important. But the special permit, I'm more approved with the special permit than I would with the CG.
Give us your own.
That's a motion, yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, sir, come on in.
Hi, my name is Doug Posey. I'm the doctor and the owner at Riverside Veterinary Clinic. Thank you all for your time today. I won't go through everybody's names individually. I'm pretty raw at this, so forgive me if I miss some of the semantics. Let me dispel a myth that we're trying to open a bar behind the clinic, okay? The problem we have here is the clinic was built in 1976. The entire property was bought by the previous owner at that time. At that time, the city-county line ran right through the middle of that property. Before the city annexed that property for residential, there was a second building that was placed there and was used at the time for boarding and grooming, which now no longer does. We don't do boarding and grooming. We've received zero complaints in the entire time I've been there. We simply, we send, we don't even keep animals overnight. There is a patch of land that's .4 acres that was zoned residential and literally cut, it bisected my second building in half. And so in my opinion, this is actually an oversight that I'm trying to correct. There's still a large gap of property, roughly 350 feet before you ever get to the back road and an additional 50 feet of easement before you ever get to any existing residential area. We have no plans to develop the back third of that property. If we do, you have it at your leisure to zone it however you provide. We are simply trying to correct an oversight and take a 60-by-130-foot piece of land that should have already been zoned CG2 to exist as the entity before it was incorrectly annexed. I have an illustration, if this would clarify things for you, to give you an idea. Did y'all, are y'all interested in that?
Yes, sir.
Because it's easy for me to understand because I've been fighting this uphill battle for a time.
Sure. You can, yeah. Yeah. No, but who's, who's? No, but someone started that myth, Dr.? The bar, I hadn't heard the bar thing. We were just wondering, did somebody start saying that out there?
Well, somebody made the comment that they didn't want a bar butted up against their...
Oh, here?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, did they? I missed that.
So there's a significant...
Oh, it was you? Okay.
Sir.
Mr. Posey, Dr. Coe? Mayor, if I could, I want to explain the reason I made that comment, and it's not to say anything bad about what you're trying to do. I support what you're trying to do 100%. But you have to understand, when we rezone a piece of property, that zoning goes with that piece of property from now on.
Correct.
So if you cease to exist there...
Correct.
The zoning stays.
And I understand that. And my point is that, with the exception of the 60 feet that I've owned since that time that was annexed incorrectly, it's existed as CG2 for 35 years already with zero complaints. That's my point. If you look at that piece of property, the part that's being carved out is sort of a sawtooth-shaped property. The area that's in question here is simply the highlighted region. None of the area that's left, that's, that you see that's 2B above that property, north of that, on that diagram, is being developed, nor are we requesting that it be classified as CG2. So pretty much, I just basically want half my building and my backyard back from a CG2 perspective. That's really all I'm asking for.
So, Dr. Posey, so you're saying there were the highlighted places, the X?
Yes, sir.
That's the only piece of land that you're asking to go back to the CG?
That's correct.
That, just that one?
Yes, sir.
Because you're saying that the front part of it is already CG?
Yes, sir. Well, let me rephrase that. This is, this replat, 2A, is CG.
Okay.
We are asking that the part that's included with 2B and this section, which is right next, you see the car wash and the K-bobs?
Yes, sir.
Those are already CG2.
Okay.
So we're asking that 2B plus the little, the little second part of, that's highlighted, be inclusive in what the rest of the property has already been designated years ago.
So you're in building one and two, you're in one?
Yes. Well, I'm in both. Building one is our outpatient. Building two is where I do surgery and imaging.
Right.
Okay.
So that smaller section, 2A, is a section that we, that's, we're planning on keeping that separate from the part that we're trying to potentially develop.
This part in the back, you're not asking to be rezoned?
No, sir.
Okay, so Al, let me...
That wasn't very clear in our presentation.
Yeah, it wasn't. So...
That's why the zoning commission agreed with us.
Al, so explain the thinking behind the staff recommendation, if that's all he's asking for.
Let me...
I mean, I don't understand. That's what threw a curve on me.
Okay, you see the, this is on your screen in front of you, right? So he's correct. Part of the property is on CG2, the back half is on RS6.
Okay.
What we're trying to do is arrest the CG2 because of what could be there if this, no offense, if this operation goes away, then it's zoned CG2. So the, for where this is located, that is a mistake. So we're correcting it with a special permit with the ON, which is Neighborhood Office SP. Planning Commission said, no, I don't see anything wrong with that. And whether they did or didn't, the smart thing to do, because he still gets what he wants, is to expand his operation, but now it's under a Neighborhood Office permit rather than a CG2. Because like Councilman Pusley said, when, if something's going to happen, the land will still be CG2, and someone will go, oh, we can open up whatever it allows in CG2. And that's what we're trying to avoid. So in essence, Planning Commission disagree with us. I really don't know why, because we're not hindering the doctor's operation in any way. We're just trying to arrest that and kind of protect what's around the area, actually.
So there's nothing about the special permit that would hinder his operation?
Absolutely not. It just simply says veterinarian and animal hospital.
And Dr. Posey, do you have an objection?
I do. I do. Well, I have two phases of that. The first one is, having pre-existed, it should have been CG2 before they annexed it incorrectly. And the second part is, if I decided not to, let's say I decided to sell the practice, why should 280 feet of my business be CG2 and the remaining 60? You're bisecting my practice and devaluing the value of my property if I decided to sell it as a CG2 for 60 feet that should have already been done.
Well, so I'm having trouble understanding, when you say it was incorrectly...
Well, my point is, when they annexed the land and went residential, they basically made half of my back building a residential property, which, I mean, there's, I would assume there's some sort of a grandfather if you have an existing business. I could be incorrect. Maybe you have to close business if they decide to annex. I don't know.
Well, in that area, we have several what they call non-conforming properties that were operating businesses when the city annexed them. And so if they ever changed the operation, then they would have to comply with the current zoning laws.
Correct. And that was what they were alluding, my point is, I don't need to, I don't see what the, what the commissions, I don't see what the councils, I don't see where it benefits you to devalue the property if I decide to do something with 60 extra feet of CG2. Now I have to explain every time I want to sell any property, be it to the left or to the right, that, okay, this middle part, you know, rather than it being two separate pieces of property, the back third can be designated at a future date at the city's, at the city's discretion. You have that control.
So you own a lot 2B in the back?
Yes, sir. That's, that whole piece is 2B. I just, I designated it on the front and the back to clarify that. That is, that's a sort of a sawtooth carve-out, but I do own all of it. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, at this time, to be honest with you, I would not have a problem endorsing the CG2 for you.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll support the CG2.
Thank you.
So my motion is to accept the CG2.
Okay.
Point of order?
Yes.
Do we have to rescind the...
Yeah, we have a, your motion, initial motion on the floor was the opposite.
Rescind your motion.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Make a motion to accept the CG2.
CG2 zone.
I'll rescind my second as well, but I just want to make a point. I appreciate the fact that the planning staff is...
CG2 zone?
I'll rescind my second as well, but I just want to make a point. I appreciate the fact that the planning staff is, in what they're doing and what they're saying here and protecting the, what they're doing here. Because, I mean, as Dr. Posey said, he may decide to sell all of this at one point in time and then, you know, we're stuck with whatever the zoning ends up being. So I appreciate your point of view on this. Thank you.
Okay, did you have comments or? Yes, go right ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman. I'm Murray Bass, Bass and Welch Engineering. We're assisting Dr. and Ms. Posey with this application. Just want to point out a couple of things that the, when the property was originally rezoned, the city limit line was along that north line of that. So they didn't, couldn't, couldn't rezone anything beyond that. And then when it was annexed, it was not, it was annexed, even though it was being used by the vet clinic, it was annexed as residential. So that, that, there is a certain rub. But also, the rear portion that would be remaining RS6 or residential on either side, I believe, is joined by professional offices, ON, I believe. I'll be corrected, Mr. Raymond and Mr. Demus. But I think, so in order for that property to ever be usable, it's not going to be used as residential. It would probably be rezoned to office neighborhood and used for those purposes. At the, the staff, you know, says the area is zoned for our A, area development plan is, it says for mixed use. Well, in this block, we have a church, we have a vet clinic, we have a car wash, and we have a restaurant. Nice mix. And so it just, would appreciate your consideration in trying to correct this something that maybe shouldn't have ever gone forward. And I mean, with the reason the back part didn't get rezoned. We're only asking for enough to get the building, the, a little backyard, and then a buffer zone that was required by the UDC in this zoning. So the rest of it is, and we're just, as you can see, we're just slightly behind where the car wash and K-bobs property lines are. So I thank you very much.
I think it, I think it's a great project.
I'm sorry, sir.
I think it's a great project and support what you're trying to do. I just was trying to listen to what staff had to say at the same time. I wish we would have gotten this drawing instead of what we got, so...
You're simplifying it a lot better, Dr. Posey, to be honest with you.
It makes it a lot easier to understand because this drawing we got, it looked like it was the whole back end of that property, so...
How I looked at it.
It made it a little harder to understand, so, thanks very much.
Yeah, and I want to kind of put my two cents in here. I don't think a special permit addresses his needs. If he has to sell the property, you have to go back and rezone it because it's non-conforming use. And a special permit goes away with when he sells the property, right?
It goes away is when the use is no longer operable.
Right, so I think ultimately a CG2 makes sense and there's still significant buffer. I don't even think that should be RS6, it probably should be ON.
And that's what it was. I mean, that's how it was annexed in, and I don't know how we came to that, but it is what it is. And so we were just trying to correct future issues.
Okay, well, I'm in support of being CG2 that way. The entire property where the, all the buildings are all inconsistent, and he won't have to do any weird stuff when he sells a property or sells his business.
Keep in mind, keep in mind, the gentleman is only rezoning what you see on the screen, right?
Right, I get it.
So that means the back half is still going to be RS6, so...
Right.
And maybe at a later time he does edit to change it.
Councilman Hernandez, I wasn't suggesting that he'd do anything weird.
No, no, that's not what I meant.
I don't even want to know what that means.
I meant weird in terms of having to sell it with different zoning, you know, because the property is still there. The building is still kind of straddling two different zonings and, you know, that creates complications when you try to sell property.
So the next time you want to zone something, call either Billy or I ahead of time and we'll help you get this usher through. And there'll be a lot less confusion, I promise you.
So I'm in support of the CG2, thank you.
Okay, we're going to, I'm going to go ahead and close public, public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
There's a motion in a second on the floor.
For CG2. Yes, ma'am. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Good luck, Dr. Posey.
Okay, section L is individual consideration items, item number 17. And that's a presentation and ordinance adopting the North Beach Drainage Improvement Project Plan.
Second.
Okay, do we have any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to see the presentation.
We've already seen it, Gil.
How many votes?
Well, no, there's something specific I want to ask about the, the things that traverse the actual ditch. Is it going to be culverts or is it going to be bridges?
I've already talked to the city manager, we've talked about that.
Can we do it? Did you not get your individual presentation?
I did not get an individual presentation.
Did we get one? I don't even know. You get, you did?
I made time to come here to City Hall to listen to this individual presentation.
I got the individual presentation.
Okay, let's not, let's not, let's not fight, gentlemen, stop.
I did get a presentation.
Go ahead.
No, ask his question.
With the presentation or with the question?
No, no, forget the presentation.
You can ask a question. I mean, I'm pretty familiar with this whole thing, but I just wanted, you know, in terms of bridges or culverts.
So what's in the, the budget that we base this on is based on the 27, or 2021 LAN study. That study included culverts for the crossings.
Right, but as Councilman Lerman and I talked about...
We've already talked about that.
You can't, right, initially, we can, it's what the budget will allow with the expectation that in the future, as we develop more of it, you replace culverts with bridges for better aesthetics and it would allow craft like kayaks.
Well, it's not only that, from what has been brought to my attention, we can't use a hot tax if we don't have any kind of bridges that connect.
Right.
That, you won't be able to use hot tax. And it's very important for us to use every source of funding that we can for this project.
Right.
You know, I mean...
Okay, so the reason I brought this up is because if you use this as a conveyance, you're eligible to use it for hot taxes, and I say state hot taxes. And I'll read the legislation. It's section 351.110, allocation of revenue for certain transportation systems. So notwithstanding any of the provisions in the chapter, municipalities may use this revenue delivered from the tax imposed under this chapter for transportation systems that transport tourists from hotels to nearby, near the municipality to commercial centers of the municipality, convention centers, other hotels, tourist attractions. So if you have hotels on this canal, or on this canal, and it has a conveyance similar to, let's say, the San Antonio River Walk, we have those little flat bottom boats, right? And you can convey to, from, from a hotel that's on that thing to, to, let's say, the end, where you have the Lexington and you have the aquarium, then we could use that funding, but you can't do that with culverts, right? You can't, it doesn't convey with culverts. You have to have bridges to where you can go underneath. And it doesn't have to be a sailboat. It could just be one of those little, you know, little water, flat bottom taxis that they use in San Antonio. But if you use that, and you have that opportunity, you can, you can also kayak along that, you know, or use a, you know, one of those little paddle boards that you could go along that and go from place to place. But it has to be a conveyance. So I would recommend that we look at this from the perspective of make it a conveyance. It doesn't have to be a Grand Canal. Okay, we, we lost that, it's gone. Okay, but you still should look at it as conveyance so you can access that money. Does that make sense?
We're in agreement with that. Councilman Lerman and I had that conversation, yes.
Okay, but I want to make sure that, you know, there's, the wording here says it's a, for conveyance, for transportation. And as long as you, if you, if we do, this works out really great and some, you know, developers put some hotels or some, you know, residence or something like that and we can convey from one location to another, I think that makes it all the more a usable space.
We're not talking about using $20 million to put a bridge there, I mean, but we just need something, the connectivity of some doors.
It doesn't have to be a high bridge, it could just be, you know, just a regular kind of thing.
Absolutely. No, but you guys are talking...
We're talking about it, yeah. I mean, I don't think everything's finalized, but this is just, we have to move forward.
Right, nothing's designed yet, so when we select the design consultant, that's when we can lay, we can put in the requirements of what type of bridge structures and what, or how many.
We need to move this project forward.
I agree, right.
We really do, I mean...
All right, Councilman Smith?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I think something to take in consideration, so we had the TERS 2 talk earlier, that the TERS 4, when we originally formed the TERS 4, the $42 million was the capacity of that TERS. So we could easily go out there and do some bonding, just like TERS 2 did for Packer Channel, to be able to get kind of to this next level. Because again, you know, I second the motion for the TERS number four for North Beach, yet we have not done anything in four years. And that was the reason why, to have a good sized bucket of money that we could make a difference. And now we're four years and we haven't made a difference. So I hope that the incoming council keeps that in mind with it. That's what that TERS was, one of the drivers originally behind that TERS, to get to this next step on there. Go ahead and bond out of the TERS and get some of these Phase 2 type, the linear park. We heard earlier how nice a linear park, that's what's going to change in North Beach, not building private swimming pools.
Right.
Right, we agree, Councilman. Yes, sir?
Yes, very good. Okay, that's wonderful, we're good. Councilman, you're good, so we're happy with that. Okay, so we have a motion?
Do we have to make any changes to reflect?
I would recommend you do it when we bring the design contract to council, we'll bring it in the language.
Okay, so nothing that's here, I mean, because he just said that this, the current, the way it's set right now is culverts. We don't have to do anything with the particular language of this ordinance to say that it must be a conveyance.
Sir, if you look into Packer, sir, the ordinance isn't detailed down to the culvert or bridge.
I'm just, I'm just clarifying. So I could reference this discussion if it becomes...
It's recorded.
We have a commitment by the staff, the city manager and the staff that we're all going to look at the details when we get the design.
Right.
And that's good enough for me.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir, good, Councilman.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman?
There are any motions?
Well, we've got a comment.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm, was just getting a little head here and I made the motion to approve this. I'm going to, I'm going to withdraw my motion and defer to the District One Council member. He's worked very hard for this project, I think.
You're fine, Councilman, I have no issues with you. I've done well with your support and the council's support. I'm okay with that.
Okay, all right, I'm good then.
Okay, we're voting, we're voting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, I dare you to say no. The motion carries.
I want to thank, I want to thank everyone that's been, had part in doing this project. It's been a long time that they waited for this project. It's been a long time and I'm glad that we're moving forward and good things are coming to North Beach.
And Councilman, next year is going to be a big year for North Beach.
It sure is, thank you.
It is.
Thanks, Councilman.
Okay, next section, section M, first reading ordinances, items 18 through 24.
Mayor, could I, I'd like to ask Rebecca a little point of order here, maybe for future meetings to help improve our meeting time here. With the ordinances section of this, especially when we deal with grants, I mean, in other words, when somebody's offering us 206 to do that, and so could we not put the grant section, Rebecca, into a consent agenda for grants? And do all of that? And have, like any other consent agenda item, if somebody wants to pull it for a discussion, it's available to do that?
The only thing, the way our consent agenda is organized right now, it's second readings. So these are first readings, this is just the first look at it. What we could do, though, is if they're routine, keep it under first reading ordinances, but if they're routine, just kind of group those and we could vote on them in one, in one vote. And only those items that the council had questions on or the city manager wanted to pull...
What you're saying is the way they're listed now, we have to have two readings?
This is the first reading, yes.
It's the first reading.
And then next week, we'll notice that these, yes, sir.
But do they have to, do they have to have two readings?
They could still be under consent this week.
We normally, it's a two reading, it's a two reading process by charter.
Okay, so that, that's my question.
That's what we're doing, we're just going to do it under consent.
So we'd have it under consent twice. We would have it under consent the first time and then it would appear on consent again.
Right, but to go even further, and we don't have to discuss this, why do they need to be first, I mean, two readings for a grant or accept a grant?
It's in our charter.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying is, do they need to, or can we change, for example, the charter at some point to not have that?
We could do an amendment at some point if that's what the council wanted.
I don't know. I don't know, I don't want to discuss it now, so we can ask her. But my point is, there's no, there's no point to two readings to accept hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, I mean, what we've done in the past, like I said, is we've, we've voted on them all at once at their routine ordinances. That's an option. But what you're pointing out, we could try that too, Mr. Posey. Let me talk to staff and we'll come up with a solution for that.
Well, in the meantime, I'm going to make a motion that we approve items 18, 19, and 20.
21, 22?
Yeah, yeah, all of them.
All of them, through 22.
And then if somebody, if the mayor wants to open up public hearing on that one motion, we can do that.
Okay, so we have a motion on, on the floor to...
I'll second that.
To approve items 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22. These are all acceptance and authorizations to execute documents for grants through, well, various different entities. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make public comment on any of these items? Chief Marco, would you like to make a comment? Go. This is it.
Councilman Hunter, thank you. Thank you.
It goes on and off, Chief, don't...
Oh, well, thank you for expediting the process. These are all great grants and new heavy body armor in there is one of them. It's part of the post-Uvalde.
Right.
That's a great, that's a great grant, appreciate that.
Yes, the letter I signed. Thank you, and Pat, thank you. I know you play a big part in these grants, thank you very much. He gets to come up and take the credit, but we know you're back there getting all these grants.
She's only been here 44 years, she does not know too much.
I love it. I love it, thank you, Pat. We appreciate it very much. All right, we have a motion. Did we have a second? We do? Okay, any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. And that will then take us to item number 23. That's an ordinance authorizing a professional services contract with Hanson Professional Services, Inc. in the amount of $143,057, $143,057.50 for the Northwest Boulevard Drainage Feasibility Study. Hi, Ratna.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item authorizes a professional services contract with Hanson Professionals for Northwest Drainage Boulevard Improvements Feasibility Study. This slide shows the project location. The project location is from, on Northwest Boulevard from River Hill Drive to County Road 69. The, this slide shows the project scope. What we are trying to do is come up with a feasibility study, coordinate with the county, city, and state officials, do the survey of the project location and discuss some of the phasing options for this project. This is the preliminary design and based on the findings of this, we will bring in a design contract for this project again. The planned feasibility study will be completed from, you know, will start in October, November, and then it should be completed by February, March. And then in March, we will come up with a design contract. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, let me know.
Okay, Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, real quick question on this. And I'm looking at the matrix here for the, for the section.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Hunter, for your support on this. You didn't interview all the ones that submitted, but it's, in the interview, you have a section there where it says capability to perform the work. Does that include capacity and how much work is being done? So you don't ask that until you get to the interview. And, let me finish. The reason I had, I brought this up is because Jeff had mentioned to me that Hanson had a lot of capacity issues last year and that's why some of the projects that were, that were scheduled for my district were delayed. So I'm a little concerned that, I mean, if you're going to ask a capacity issue on the backside instead of the front side, why are you doing that that way?
So how we schedule these top two forms is, we pick the top two forms for interviews based on this... based on the scores. And then also, we look at their team. So for drainage study, you have a different team. The projects that you're talking are mostly road design projects, which are Bond 2020 projects.
They do have a drainage component to them.
Yes, exactly. But then the hydraulic study is done by a different team, and the road design is done by a different team. So we did look into that. And then also, all the Bond 2020 design projects are, you know, at like 60, 90 percent state, so they should be completed pretty soon.
So why only the top two?
Just because it's, it's one project, it's, we did the evaluations for just one project, and for one project, we said, okay, let's look at the scores. If you look at the scores, there is a cut, right? So the Hanson Professional got 67, and the Friesen Nichols have 63 points. We generally look at the cut point, like, okay, these two are in 60s, but when you get to the third one, then you have half associates, which is 58, and you have L A N, which is 58. So you have to start interviewing all those firms. So you have to either interview four or more, or just, you know, look at the cut and then, you know, come up with that point.
Okay, well, like I said, you know, the, I'd like more understanding and consistency in how you, how these things are selected. Everything's different every time it comes to council. So, I mean, I don't know how to evaluate what I'm seeing, just by what we get. So there's no consistency in any of this. So I'd like to have a better understanding. And this, I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna speak for my other council members, but I'm sure this comes up quite often.
Projects are generally grouped under different buckets when we are doing RFQ. Like, for example, all the road projects are grouped under one road project, stormwater projects are under a different group. If you just have one stormwater project, then, you know, you look at the scores and the firms, and then you go from there. Road projects are different. For example, sometimes, we have an RFQ right now, we put in almost 2025 road projects in there. So we have to use a different evaluation category when you get to the road design project. So it depends on the type of projects, and the complexity of the project, and the firm's expertise.
Okay, yeah, but I'm talking about the valuation.
Right.
I'm not talking about the actual individual projects. I mean, sometimes you interview more than, more than two, and sometimes you, you know, and this one's particularly two. So I just want some consistency.
So we're operating off, I'm sorry, Josh Cronley, for the record, Assistant Director for Finance and Procurement. So we're operating off of the guidelines provided by the state, and then the best practice across the country is to look for what's called the clean break. And that's the, that's the point in which there is a scoring differential among the PAC. And if you don't have a clean break, then it's best practice to interview 50% or 25%, whatever that, that looks like. And I can, that's out of the state handbook, sir.
Well, you, I mean, so when you say a clean break, you have a total of 80 points, and you have two that are above 60, you have two that are 58, and then you have some that are fall off below that. So, I mean, what's your clean break?
Well, the natural break there would be the 60-point mark, because the other two firms are below the 60-point mark.
Okay, so help me out here, Josh.
Sir.
What I have to do is, I have to defend our process, right? To say it's a fair process. Okay, so what I, you know, so what I need from you is, how do I, how do I do that? How do I make, how do I, you know, when engineers come up to me and say, we're being screwed over by the city's procurement, and I have no answer for them, right? I said, I don't know, I have no visibility to how they score things, we just get the results. So if I don't have faith in the process, which I don't, I'll be clear about that, because it's inconsistent, tell me how do we, how do we solve this?
Well, I think the easiest way to answer that would be that the firms can meet with us. They're allowed to do debriefs, I do them all the time. I get firms who don't win an award, and they ask for a debrief. And what they do is they say, how can I do better next time? And so we have a sit-down, and we go through, I pull up redacted copies of the names of the scoring individual parties, but I bring them numbered versions of the score sheets. We sit, we go through how they were scored, what the rankings were, and what they could do better. And on those score sheets that the scorers provide, they usually put notes in indicating why they gave the score. And so we can address that material with them and help them for the next event.
Okay, so, I mean, it still doesn't help, but they might, you know, get them that specific information, but I just, I think I need a little bit more, I think we need more consistency in this, because, you know, we're going through this process. Like I said, I have no way to defend it.
I mean, we're using the best metric for this, which is, is to try to interview the firms with the highest scores. So I'm sorry that other people aren't scoring as high, and so they're not making the cut. I mean, I feel bad.
But I don't know what, how you're scoring.
Well, off the technical evaluation, that's.
Well, yeah, but I don't have any visibility to it, none at all.
Well, the criteria's published in the RFQ. If you'd like, we could start including all of the different criteria in the agenda memo, so I just feel like it would make your PAC bigger.
Yeah. Okay, obviously, we're not, we're not getting any.
Yeah, and Mr. Hernandez, but remember, we have a week. You guys get this a week in advance, and you can come make appointments. You, many times, I reach out to staff to make sure I'm clear on whatever it is I need to be clear of. But I think everybody's open to that, correct?
If we want to, I mean, I don't have mind getting the redacted, the non-redacted copies and seeing what, all that stuff, and we can make appointments every week for that. Is that what you'd like to do? I mean, is that, is that what you, would you like?
If it took some time to get you comfortable with the process, I'd be happy to. We're very transparent about it, we're using best practice, there's nothing.
Okay.
Councilman, it's what you need.
Yeah.
They're not gonna tell you what you need. Every person up here can say, I gotta meet with you. You know, if I need to meet with you a couple days out of the week to make sure I understand everything, then that's what will happen. That's the reason that the city manager.
I'll take you up on that.
Mr. Hernandez, that's the reason these books are produced a week in advance, and that takes a lot of work, too.
Right, and I'm not the only one that has issues here, so I, I mean, it's just, it is.
I don't hear anybody else.
I think they've, I think they've expressed it before.
We wanna make sure you're prepared.
And, you know, there's, there's concerns that some, some companies have been, for lack of a better word, blackballed. So, and, you know, I can't, I can't say that that's the case, and I can't say that it's not, right? Because I don't understand the process. I don't have visibility to your scoring process. I don't know who does the scoring, so I can't say that that's the case. So if you want me to help, help in this process, you gotta educate, you know, and get into the details about that. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilman Pasley.
Yeah, I just wanna comment. I've been dealing with this process for a long time. I dealt with it for nine years at the county, and it's always a very subjective thing, no matter how you do it. Each, and your point is well-taken, it depends on whether you're doing water, stormwater, streets, you know, in our case, it was usually bridges and drainage mainly. But at the county, the difference was, for the different projects, the commissioner for the respective precincts sat in on those, those selection processes. By state law, we could do that. And I can tell you, even sitting in those rooms myself, it would come down, you'd have five engineering firms, or whatever it was, and you're trying to decide between those five, which one's gonna best fit the picture, and it's difficult. There's no easy way to describe, you go on what, your past history obviously has a big part to play, but some of it just gets down to, you know, almost flipping a coin. So I don't know that, you know, for an OCD person like me or Gil, it's, it's never gonna be perfect. And so I don't know what the answer is. If we're bidding the process, if you're bidding the process like that, then you're dealing in dollars and cents, but this is more subjective, and it gets really difficult.
Well, unfortunately, procure an engineer or an architect, we're not allowed to do a bid.
No, I understand that. I know, I understand that law perfectly. That was explained to me in County Commissioner 101 class. But the, but it just gets really difficult, and I understand the council's concern about it. But I will say this, I think the city does about as good a job as I've seen compared to what I saw for the nine years I was commissioner. There were many times I had questions about, well, why did, why did it get bid that way? Because if one of the other commissioners sat in on his project, and they came up with an answer different than I would, I'd say, well, you know, that's not what I would've done, but, so anyway, it's a difficult process.
And I have a published criteria. I'll make sure, get it through the manager, but we'll make sure you all get to look at the, kind of the guide we have for staff on how we do these, so you guys can see that we have a very strong fundamental structure built to perform these. I just wanna hound on that process being solidified outside and internally. We had, you know, we had Weaver come in and analyze our bidding process. I feel very comfortable telling you we're doing the best practices the state allows us to do.
And Josh, you just, you've been purchasing director for a while, but you just recently got some certification?
I did. I went on to the state, and I took the state certification exam, and so I'm now a Texas Certified Contract Developer.
Yes, sir.
Wanted to lighten the scrutiny that could happen, I wanted to make sure that I was being able to provide the best answers and, and have the certification to approve it, so.
Yeah, we appreciate you doing that. You self-selected to do that, you chose that yourself, right?
I did, yes, sir.
It wasn't a job requirement?
No, sir. We talked about looking at professionalized procurement staff, and we were talking about that, and I said, if that's something I want my staff to do, I've gotta be able to do it first.
Right, we wanna congratulate you for doing that, Josh.
Yeah, that's great.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations, Josh, it's a big deal.
Thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Mayor, I just wanna commend Josh, I think.
Commend him.
Uh, yeah, if I may.
Yeah, yes.
Is Michael still here?
He's voting.
No, I think the process has improved tremendously. I think the process has improved tremendously, and I think there's times that perhaps we politicize some things, and he has to defend it. So I wanna commend him for that as well. And what is it, but I can tell you that being involved in procurement, because of my experience in other organizations, I think he's doing a good job. So I just wanna say, keep up the good work.
I agree, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we? On item number 23, correct? So did we do public, but did we do public comment, Rebecca? No, so I'm gonna open public, I'm sorry, public hearing, right? Public comment.
Public comment.
I'm gonna open public comment, and I, is there anyone here that would like to make public comment? Okay, I'll go and close public comment, and we have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Okay, our last item of the day is item number 24, an ordinance authorizing Amendment Number Five to the service agreement with SecOps, Inc., for citywide security guard services. Josh, you're back.
I am. Mayor and council, this item is asking for a three-month extension to our existing security guard contract. We went out for bid for this, and when we were doing the bid analysis at the end and during the interviews with the various firms, we noticed a theme amongst all of them with issues with staffing levels. I know that as a workforce in general, companies are having a hard time keeping personnel on board. And when it comes to our security services, you know, we have many locations, and.
Yeah, 'cause that's going on and off.
Certainly. All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we looked at the, we went out for bid, and like I said, we had some problem with, we noticed that staffing was an issue, because we bundled everything together. We're talking about, you know, 20 locations across the city, some park security, it became, it's very hard for companies to bid and bid well. And so I have the new contract manager that you all approved at the mid-year and last year's budget, and she's been assigned to manage this contract. And so when we were meeting with our stakeholders on this, we decided it would be probably better if we segregated this into some different groups. One, so that we could award to multiple companies, so that everybody gets a slice of the pie. There were a lot of strong local firms that were bidding on this, but also to allow us to just easy, manage it easier. You know, right now, the libraries have not had security every, every day, because when there's a shortage, they pull them to the City Hall or some of the other locations, and so we're trying to, so I'm asking for your permission to extend it. It's about $400,000 for the three months, so it's a, it's a big ask, but we had a very competitive process the first time, so I feel like the, the cost for that is justified, but.
Okay, so Josh, let's, for clarity, so we're adding staff, or we're adding security from different companies, or?
So, so what I'm asking for today is an extension of the existing contract for three months, so that I can go back out for bid. I wanna adjust my scope. I went out for bid to renew the contract, and in analyzing the bids, I noticed that there were problems with all of the firms. Nobody was scoring great in all of the categories of the criteria.
Okay.
Because they were all struggling with the amount of staff we needed for all of the different locations. And so we wanna divide the contract up into some smaller groups.
So now it's not divided?
It's, today, it is, it is everything. So SecOps is doing everything, but they are having some staffing issues.
Got it. So you're gonna, we're gonna kinda scatter it around to different companies?
I'm gonna break it up into a couple of groups, and I'm not sure who's gonna win. And, and we might do multiple awards, we'll, we'll analyze it all when it comes together. But I could, I could tell you that from the bid results that we got in, that there were some problems with the way we bid it, because it's too large of a group for some small local companies.
Right, okay.
And this is gonna fall under professional services, so you will see some local preference points awarded for these. But we had a lot of, you know, we have a lot of need. Like I said, there are a lot of locations across the city, and so we wanna make sure we bundle this in a way that they can bid on it, and that we can award it in a manner that we'll all get the security services that we need.
Do you have the number of, how many individuals, what does it take across the board? Like, how many? I guess you could, if you have locations, or?
Well, I can tell you the locations, I have the locations on this slide in front of you, so it's City Hall, Frost Bank, all of our libraries, the Public Health District, the airport, the water treatment plants, the city landfill, and Coal Park Pier, which we added as an amendment a few months back.
Okay, all the, it just, three months, okay, this here, it just changed over. Okay, and this is your, wow, this is your weekly cost. How many people do we have here, or, Josh?
I think there are eight security officers assigned to City Hall, yes.
They're only at one time, though?
I think, no, I think there are six on staff at any time, but I think that we have eight security guards, because we have one in the parking lot, one monitoring the cameras, one in the lobby, I think we have extra staff here today.
And one on my side.
One on your side. We have extra staff here today because we have the voting, so we have two additional officers that we've brought in to help manage the public.
And, and tell me, what is their, more or less, what is their scope of work? What is the expectation? What is your expectation of them?
We would like them to secure the building, right? We wanna make sure that they're performing the security checks at the entrance to the building. We wanna make sure that nobody's coming in here with any paraphernalia that they shouldn't have, firearms, you know, anything that's gonna put staff at danger, anybody at danger. But it's also, you know, the, to make sure nobody's breaking into cars, to protect the building. And at the parks, it's graffiti, a lot of graffiti. We had that bad outbreak right after we finished our brand-new Coal Park Pier, we had the graffiti ers come out there and.
Right.
Mess that up, so.
Right. Right.
Our expectation is to, to be a presence there, to, to deter...
And they all have training? Like, let's just say something happened here, and you can imagine why I'm asking, because I'm here all the time, and then when I leave...
They do, and fifty percent of the staff that, that they use are armed security, so fifty percent of the staff that we have here at City Hall carry, and you can see that.
Okay.
And our police department...
I hope the one on my side carries.
I hope they should, but Josh procures, yeah, Josh's department procures the service, but our police department oversees the, the work, in particular Officer Mark Herod, who's with us today, they oversee the service delivery, so, I don't know if there's any questions that you want Mark to answer.
Uh, Councilman, well, let me give Councilman Pusley his time.
Yeah, Josh, I understand what you want to do here, and I'm fully supportive, let me just ask this quick question. If you, if you rebid this out, and you split this up between multiple companies, is that then going to become a management issue for internal staff here to take care of?
It won't be, sir, I've got that new contract manager and that contract team, and we're taking on, this is going to be the first time we're operating the contract, that's why I'm bringing that item up for you today.
But I'm, I'm not necessarily talking about the contract management, I'm talking about the people management, so you're going to have multiple security firms doing multiple things, is that going to be...
There won't be overlap at any of the locations, so it'll be pretty clear, we'll, we'll have a, a flow chart, but I think that's the best way to be able to sure, ensure every location gets the security that they need.
Yeah, Councilman, I think the, Josh's answer is correct, but I think another answer is yes, it's going to be a little more complex, but we don't have an alternative.
Yeah.